Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Douglas Planning Board meeting for September 10th, 2020. The meeting is being recorded and is available for viewing on the Douglas Public Access Channel and on the website. We'll come to order at 7:05.
Yep.
Before we conduct our business, I just want to mention Mary Wright is leaving. She's been with us since 2012 doing our meeting minutes. Done an excellent job all these years. We'll miss her. Good luck to her, whatever she does in the future. Sorry she's going, but Mary, good luck. Thank you for everything you've done for us in the past. And to welcome our new minutes person, Ashley Poems. Is she on right now, listening?
Probably listening, maybe.
Okay, well, Ashley, if you're listening, thank you. Good luck, and we're glad to have you on our team. Okay, we'll come to order.
So along those lines, Mr. Chairman, if you're speaking tonight, just so Ashley becomes a little more familiar with who's speaking, just make sure we state our name and stuff. It's a little more difficult when we're online like this.
Sure. Yeah, so yeah, I'll try to recognize her. She'll know who's talking. All right.
I'll say through the chair, I did do the Mullen report.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mike.
I'm caught up. I watched it.
That was Mike Z. He did the Mullen report. Okay. All right, first item. Public hearing continued. William Sterick, application for an accessory special permit, 12th Parker Road. Withdrawal request. So we have a request to withdraw the accessory apartment. I, William J. Sterick, am hereby withdrawing the accessory apartment application for 12th Parker Road, Douglas, Mass. Thank you for your time in regards to this matter. So, public hearing's open. Want to entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Do you want to say something?
Is there any fees that he's asking for to be returned or anything?
No.
That's fine, okay. Sometimes there is.
I'll make a motion to accept the withdrawal letter for 12th Parker Road.
Okay, motion's been made by Tracy.
Seconded by Mike.
And close the public hearing.
And close the public hearing. Made by Mike G.
Amendment.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Let Stevens eye.
Aye.
Roll call vote?
Let Stevens eye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Swicker, aye. Aaron Silkred, aye.
Tracy Sharkey, aye.
Yeah, the motion passes.
Jake Schultzberg, aye.
Out of sight, out of mind.
Got you, Jake.
Jake, is he there?
We got him.
Did Jake vote? He said aye, I didn't hear him.
Yep.
All right. Okay. Now, next item on the agenda. Public hearing, Town of Douglas Planning Board and Tree Warden, application for scenic roads and public shade tree law and scenic road bylaw permit, Orange Street. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 15(c) scenic roads, Chapter 87, public shade tree law, Section 3, cutting of public shade trees, hearing damage, and the Town of Douglas General Bylaws Article 5, Section 6, scenic road bylaw. The Town of Douglas Planning Board and the Tree Warden will hold a public hearing for the Town of Douglas to prune and remove trees that are dead and dying or impede the safe travel along Orange Street in Douglas. The specific trees to be removed are as follows, and as quite the list, I'm not going to name them all. You can look at the sheet if you want the information. The public hearing is being held on Thursday, September 10th, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the Resource Room, Municipal Center, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the above matter should appear at the time and place designated. Ernest Mark, Chairman, Douglas Planning Board, public hearing is now open.
Highway Department has submitted a request for the trees identified in the advertisement. They've also labeled the trees out in the field that need to be taken down. I believe all of them are either intruding in the way or have some health issues and certainly are safety issues.
Yep.
I'm not sure if John, you want to add to that at all?
Yeah, so around 2015, we started with the gypsy moth caterpillars, and they did a job on oak trees. And 99% of these trees on Orange Street are dead, dying, hazardous trees, so looking to get them removed. You know, this is going to be a multi-year phase. There's 80-something trees just on that tree alone, but I need to start the process.
Okay, thank you, John.
I just got one question.
Yep.
When you're taking them down, are you taking them right down to the ground?
That's correct.
Good. All right. Because I know there's some where they've been topped, and what happened is they start to rot, and that goes into the road. Yeah, okay. Especially around, like northwest, going out my way.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of them have been topped, and they start to rot and die, and then windstorms come, and then the whole part of the tree ends up.
Yeah, our national grid, they help us out by taking the trees down below the wires. If we don't get to the stumps, that's what happens.
Okay.
Where taking these trees?
These are taken, good. Take them right down.
Question, Mike Greco. Do we have a rough estimate of how many trees this is? Did you ever add them up?
It's at 80.
About 80 trees.
All right, thank you. Okay, anybody else on the board have any questions?
No.
No, I think all of them.
This is a public hearing. Does anybody in the audience have any questions? All right, seeing none.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion made by Aaron?
No, made by, seconded by me.
Made by Mike Z., seconded by Aaron. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Let Stevens eye.
Yeah, roll call vote.
Let Stevens eye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Swicker, aye. Aaron Silkred, aye.
Tracy Sharkey, aye.
Jake Schultzberg, aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
And we need to vote to approve anything, Bill?
Yep.
So it's both scenic road and public shade tree.
So we'll make a motion to approve the removal of the shade trees. On scenic roads, shade trees and tree law, bylaw permit, SR 20820.
Motion made by Mike Z., seconded by Mike G. Any further discussion? All those in favor, roll call.
Let Stevens eye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Swicker, aye. Aaron Silkred, aye.
Tracy Sharkey, aye.
Jake Schultzberg, aye.
Motion passes. Okay, public hearing is done. Thank you, John.
John, thanks for labeling those.
Thank you.
Thanks for labeling all the trees. No. Were you out there with a stapler?
I hit my thumb twice.
No, it was good, I mean, to identify them, I mean. There's no disputing them, they're all.
You know which ones they are, anyway, yeah.
And I mean, great. You got quite a few other streets to do later. So, I actually got to talk to you about two of them next week.
All right.
But I want to, oh, I'll take down with the machine.
All right, we have to wait till 7:15 to start our next public hearing, so anything...
Can we take some things out of order?
Anything to...
We can, if Bill has something.
Bill, anything you want to take out of order, or?
Specifically, we can just start pecking away.
No, we only got a couple of minutes, we want to just...
Want to do a minute? Every even minute?
We can if you want.
Yeah, I do, if you want to do that.
Yeah, well, next one out now. What, we got August 13th? Countless.
I have minutes for August 13th.
Okay.
I looked at it, I didn't see anything. Anybody else? I'll make a motion for writing.
Nobody has anything on August 13th?
No.
Are these the last meeting minutes by Mary, or?
Yes, they are.
They are? All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written for August 13th, 2020.
Motion made by Mike G.
Seconded.
Seconded by Tracy. Roll call vote, all in favor?
Let Stevens eye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Swicker, aye. I was absent, but I did the Mullen.
Okay.
Good. Tracy Sharkey, aye.
Jake Schultzberg, aye.
Okay, motion passes. Meeting minutes are approved.
That's why there's no pepper business here, except for board members.
Yeah, looks like it.
All right, 7:15.
Public hearing continued. Cooperstown Road Realty Trust, application for a definitive subdivision residential compound, Hawk Hill Farm, 768 and 772 Northwest Main Street. Request for a continuance. Okay, and I have a written request. I am sending a request for a continuance for Hawk Hill Farms. Please let me know if you require any additional information. Thank you, Meg Schulzmann.
So, do we want to, for the next meeting, or for the meeting after that?
Yeah, did they make, they didn't make any...
They didn't indicate...
Put them on for the next.
We can, yep.
And if they don't?
Yeah.
Well, Andrew, is Andrew here?
Dude's here. Yeah, but they might be swapping engineers.
Oh, okay, all right. All right, um, Ellen? Want me to make a motion?
So 7:15 on September 23rd?
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for Cooperstown Road Realty Trust to September 23rd at 7:15.
Okay, motion made by Tracy.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mike G. Any further discussion? All those in favor, roll call, please.
Let Stevens eye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Swicker, aye. Aaron Silkred, aye.
Tracy Sharkey, aye.
Jake Schultzberg, aye.
Okay, motion passes. 7:15 and September 23rd.
760.
At 7:15.
The next one.
Okay, discussion, Economic Development Commission, discussion regarding zoning bylaws. Car wash, rezoning 13845-1, 13844, and 13845 from RC2, commercial possible votes. I don't know if we'll have that, but...
We lost Bob.
Somebody here from Economic?
Yeah, Bob just stepped out.
Oh, he stepped out?
He's not behind you. You can't see.
Where'd he go?
I don't know, I just looked up.
He was just sitting there a minute ago, yeah.
All right. I'll be in nature call.
You want to keep going?
Yeah.
I'll come back to that.
You have something, Bill?
No, just, we got Evan on the line and Bob Pace on the line.
Do we need the woodland?
Why don't we do Wallem Solar? Because I think that'll be quicker.
All right. All right, that's what number on?
I'll recuse myself, and I'll stay at the table. I don't know what the...
You can stay at the table.
Yeah.
All right, let the record show that Tracy is recusing herself from this part of the discussion.
So, Wallem Lake Solar came in with a request for, it was put on the agenda, I'll put it this way, it was put on the agenda as a decommissioning surety. We were contacted after the agenda was posted that it was a broader request for some modifications to the site plan permit that had been issued.
Okay.
There was someone voiced concern about the manner in which the agenda changed within 24 hours, and because it was not listed on the agenda that way, and it's longer than 24 hours, or 48 hours, I'm sorry, 48 hours, that, you know...
That can't be...
They raised a question on the validity of it.
Okay.
We, I had the town clerk spoke with the, well, she's put a request into the Attorney General's office to get some clarification. She didn't hear back from them today.
Okay.
They have 48 hours.
And, so we also spoke with town council, and town council seemed to agree with the person raising the concern. Okay. So, town council basically said if it's not on the agenda, then you shouldn't discuss it. I did talk to Evan earlier, and correct me if I'm wrong, Evan, you're okay with putting it off for two weeks?
Yes, sir, I mean, if it's not on the agenda, let's keep everything above board. We can push it two weeks, and we'll discuss it next time around if we can just confirm it's on the agenda sometime next week. That'll be good to go. I think it's, you know, five minutes of chatting, so I don't think it's a hair-on-fire kind of situation. Plus, why would I want to do anything that could be appealed?
Do you still want to do the decommissioning discussion?
No, the board took that up previously, and they authorized me to work with the developer and Ernie to sign on the bottom line.
Okay, so...
So what time do you need it set at? Just touch on that in the next meeting?
For this discussion, we'll have it on the next meeting.
Good, all right.
Well, usually, discussion items like this, we don't set, we don't set a time.
All right. Yeah, after the agenda's set, then we can give the discussions. Okay. Yeah, but would you just please give your name for the record, so that our new secretary can put it in the minutes?
Yes, sir. So Evan Turner, representing ASD Wallem MA Solar LLC, with the address of 0 Wallem Lake Road, which is the address of the solar array, approximately 281 is the street address on Wallem Lake Road.
Excellent, thank you. Cool. Okay, anything else, Bill?
No, not on that. Thank you, Evan.
Thank you. All right, we'll see you next meeting.
September 23rd.
September 23rd. I'll send you a draft of the agenda first.
He's got a thumbs up. Okay. All right, Bob?
I'm rejoining the meeting.
Let the record show that Tracy is now rejoining the meeting. Come on up, Bob. You want to bring a cheer up? Come on up.
You get the mic, sir.
Just give your name, what's your record?
Bob and Eric, EDC.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, Mr. Kundif. Let's see. Four items tonight. I found another one. And I discovered this one because we have an article on the town warrant for Saturday's vote with manufacturing use outside a building, and we have PB with an asterisk. Are you aware there's a PB with an asterisk already in the use regulations?
No, what's with the asterisk?
Pass this, pass these around. Well, give me half this one. It's on the first page, page 1 of 4. And nobody knows what it's for. Town council, Bill...
It's probably a typographic thing, and I think it can be...
Mark looked back to 2004, and there's nothing, no changes. I don't want any confusion, that's why I'm bringing it up, because we will have a PB asterisk on page 3.
There's...
What would that link to?
That's the manufacturing use outside a building.
But what's the asterisk?
It links to Section 5.33 and 5.4.
What does that say?
Yeah.
That's standards.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's, well, our use table here, our use schedule regs here, this table's got typos, misprints, redundant language, and I mean, so...
Well, I'm just bringing it up, because when we introduce this new usage, you'll have two PB asterisks, only one of which is applicable.
Yeah, but the zoning enforcement officer can figure that out. What does it have, the regulations for landscaping and things like that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's for two-family dwelling under RC2.
I mean, we could probably fix it next year, but I wouldn't...
Yeah.
It's at this time that it's written, it doesn't have anything, so it's about that.
Right, there's no footnote.
Right. So it's just a script.
I'm just bringing it to your attention.
Worst-case scenario, you have to go to planning board for RC2 for two-family, and we're going to say it's not applicable. The asterisk is not applicable because it was an error. So they're coming here anyway to ask us for a special permit. And we'll fix it maybe next year.
I mean, I'll check with town council, but I don't believe it needs to go through a hearing process to correct the typographic error.
Yeah, right.
I think it's just something that can be just taken care of.
Yeah, Mark went all the way back to 2004, the original version of this booklet, and it was there.
With no footnote. Yeah, so...
I don't think as a board we can do that if anybody, I mean, I've never seen an RC2 two-family come here.
I think, yeah, I think we could put a warrant article to fix the typos and misprints and spelling errors, if we need, if we need to.
I'll check with town council, I don't even think you need to do...
Okay.
Okay, so maybe we change it this way.
Okay. Okay, thank you for bringing that up, Bob.
He's been studying.
Good to know. All right.
I'm getting to know that book.
I bet you are.
It's, what do they say, if it's lemons, make lemonade? The two things I'd like to discuss, car wash, zoning bylaw amendment, and Gilboa Street rezoned to commercial. The Gilboa Street rezoned to commercial, we brought that up about four meetings ago, and it was continued. I was supposed to check with Amy Bukema on the adjoining property. She does not want to be rezoned, so let's just leave her residential RA. The corner lot on North Street and Gilboa.
Can I just jump in for a second?
Sure.
So in your packet, you have something that looks like this, in case you're wondering what area Bob's talking about, there's a color map attached to that.
Here's an extra one. Amy's house is number 18. Number 19 is not shown on this map, but it's at the corner of North Street and Gilboa, and that's owned by the town. Those two will remain RA. What's outlined in red, EDC is proposing to rezone from RA to commercial.
I don't have a copy.
I don't either.
Is this the one?
Yeah, Mike's got a copy.
Mike has a copy.
Mike's got it.
You have one, Eric?
Yeah.
All right, Aaron and I will...
Yeah, it's okay. Yeah, me and Mike Swicker know of the area.
Now you can have your own.
This is a slop land, right?
Which way, where's town?
So which one were you talking about that does not want to be rezoned? This one?
18.
Lucky Dam.
18, that's Amy Bukema's house. She lives in Connecticut.
And that's the Melvin.
Okay.
And they want to rezone what, the what? The white part?
The white, the red.
Okay.
Right, the whole north side of Gilboa Street is commercial. We just want to make both sides commercial.
Yep.
And 45.1 would be a perfect place for a car wash, if we can get that into the, into the meeting.
That's a usage thing, right? The car wash issue?
Yes, and that's my next, my next item. This is a rezone because car wash is not allowed, well, car wash is not allowed, period. But we've looking at commercial interest on this property anyways.
So, so the first item is just talking about rezoning this?
Yes.
From our idea, commercial.
All right. And that would have to be public hearing?
Sponsored by us?
How do we, how do we do the last one?
Yeah, we'd have to have something drafted up, and then the board would follow a public hearing. But I wouldn't say, I mean, obviously, we're not going to hit the town meeting on Saturday.
No.
No, we're looking at the November.
So we're looking at the fall town meeting, so we've got plenty of time to get something, and certainly, we wouldn't have a hearing now and then months out, because it's a timeline before town meeting that we have to meet, so...
So do you...
Fall town meeting?
Yeah.
We have another one in the same...
November.
November.
Special.
Okay.
So you think we can draft up a, a draft article?
That's fine.
Or draft for this, for the next meeting?
I can work with town council, and, you know, depending on how the board wants to handle this, I know Les submitted a sample table, use table.
Yeah, in talks.
Did I circulate?
Yeah, it's in the packet. This was in talks with Bob, but this is related to the second item, not really with the rezoning.
This is not the rezone, that's the usage.
Correct.
Two, two complete.
Both things, yeah.
So, either way, you know, so we'll have the language, we'll put it forth, but I wouldn't recommend we do it now.
No.
I would wait until we get closer to town meeting.
It's only two months away.
Yeah, it goes quick, though.
October, November.
Correct.
Yeah, so get it all squeezed in between.
Plus, you've got two weeks of advertising, hearing.
Yeah.
Sooner the better to get it, plus a month in advance of the warrant. We're looking mid-October to be on the warrant, which is one month away.
So, so if we could get a draft of...
The wording?
A draft of the wording for the next meeting, and then the advertising for the following meeting, that's a month from now.
Yep.
That would be a good timeline.
That puts us in October.
Correct.
EDC could draft the warrant article, and then we'll just pass it by town council.
Well, the figure, I mean, you know, there's some issues. I've got to think about how that figure is done, I don't have it in front of me. But, you know, we want to, we need to make those boundary lines reproducible, okay? So that they're not kind of arbitrary or subjective, so...
It may be due to the river, like the pond or whatever.
Yeah, the shoreline.
Do you mean, it may state that...
Which is my point, you know, it needs some thought.
I think you do it by parcel, by the accessory map parcel, and...
I think that they didn't specifically want to do it that way, right? That's not by parcel line.
Well, 45 is, touches the sewer treatment plant, and 45 is already double-zoned, RA and industrial. So if you did it by parcel, now you're pushing commercial property up against the sewer treatment plant. If they ever expand, now you have to rezone back the other way.
Oh, why would you? The sewer plant...
Is in industrial zone right now.
But, but it's ammissible.
It's allowed in every zone.
Yeah, so you don't have to, I would do it by the parcel ID, because if you try to do meets and bounds, that could take you three months. If you do it by parcel ID, and then you zoning, you rezoning the parcel.
I think you still need to use meets and bounds, though. You have to describe.
Yeah, you can just...
On 13844, which is the parking lot, we went from the tip of the parking lot, left left the parking lot, crossed the mill, DeCaro's Mill Complex. That's staying industrial. The tip of that is where this, the point of this right triangle starts.
So often, you know, like on the other side of the road, if you look at that commercial district, that's set, I think, 500 feet off the edge of the road or something. So it's something that's reproducible and easy to define. And that, that's the concern I have with the way this is drawing. So that's the only thing that, you know, I need input from the board on.
Yeah.
How you want to skin the cat.
Right. Yeah, well, I think the other problem we run into is when someone says from, you know, from this, this line or this street, 500 feet back, you run into the situation when properties.
Cotton properties and.
Cotton properties and.
We take care of that with our. Yeah, but we took care of that with our bylaw that we have for split districts.
Right, there is verbiage in there for that.
Okay.
We can prevent it, we should try to prevent it.
Yeah, so this line from Gilboa between the 44, is that the property line?
No.
Between, it's this one parcel?
Well, it starts opposite where the commercial district is on the opposite side of the road. And then it goes to the, that corner, that boundary line corner.
That is a property line, corner.
That is a property corner, yeah. And then, I'm not sure if this is a corner.
Yes, that's a property line all the way down. And then where it meets the electrical easement, the dash line on the bottom, that's where we cut across the river.
So the gray's industrial, right?
Yes.
So why wouldn't you go with industrial? What's the harm, what's the downside in just making this continue, the industrial property continue to Gilboa Street?
I thought about that. It's a good, a good point. Any opinion?
Take even this here, just make this gray area.
Make the whole thing gray.
The only thing I would offer on that is we have such little area that's commercially zoned. And if this is an opportunity to bring in something commercial, then, you know.
But isn't it better to be industrial for most of the commercial uses?
There's only two places where you're going to put any type of business there. 45.1, which is, we tried fitting a cannabis retailer there. Get 19 spaces, we need 50, so there's just not enough room. There's a lot of wetland on there.
I don't know.
A car wash would fit.
But back to my point, industrial, doesn't it allow, allow everything that commercial allows?
Yes.
Does it?
I'll have to look at the book.
So as far as the mapping goes, it probably would be a little bit easier, maybe, to figure it out if it was just you're carrying through industrial. But the uses that you are allowed in commercial, I thought all of them would be allowed also in industrial.
Yeah, but I think.
Nothing excluded from industrial zoning.
I think you get more usage out of the commercial than you do out of industrial play.
I don't think so. Industrial is 30,000 square feet.
Okay, all right.
And then there's a 35,000.
Yeah, which is commercial, right?
Three items I see is bed and breakfast, private nonprofit club, fraternal organization, public or private outdoor recreational use, not allowed in industrial, is a Y or a BA in commercial.
None of those are probably applicable in bed and breakfast. Especially in this area. Right, I mean, there's, Nap Pond is also known as Gilboa Pond.
No.
Yeah, Gilboa Pond, Nap Pond, Nap Pond is on the map.
There's solar right over here.
Yep, yep.
On the other side of the river, there's solar.
Yes.
And then it's all the sand pets or something, who's that over there?
KTKT is McIntyre.
Yeah, industrial.
So I guess it doesn't make the mapping easier.
Oh, easily.
If we make it commercial, industrial?
Industrial.
So make it industrial.
Right, make it industrial, opens up a lot more.
And it's your use, your specific use.
Works.
And if you want something, if you want a bed and breakfast, then we'll change the table again to allow bed and breakfast by planning board in industrial.
It's waiting for that right there.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I mean, you can't have it all, but to make a little squiggly line map, it's difficult. It's not easy to convey where the zoning's going to be.
No, I agree, and our next item will be the usage table for a car wash, where we will have a Y under commercial, industrial anyways.
So you're building your own table.
We're having a PB, a Y.
PB, okay.
Unless you want to change it to a Y, and you still have to come site plan review.
Well, PB is the way to go. No, no asterisk.
Yes.
No, no asterisk.
Yeah, so.
This is already industrial.
Just extend it to the road.
Side of the street, makes a lot of center, just leave it.
Just.
Like you got it, it's all.
Red.
That's red. Just make, make it all gray.
Okay.
That way, then people look at it and say, why is this a mix match?
That is the easiest way.
Yeah, so let's do that. So for our next meeting, when the, the 23rd.
And if you did the gray, would you include this area down here?
Yes.
That way, then, then have the property line.
Yep. Because some meets and bounds are centerline of the river near the sewer treatment plant. It gets complicated, so if you make it all gray.
It eliminates all that.
Doesn't, doesn't matter where you go.
Right, and it eliminates all that hassle.
Correct. So we'll have something drafted up by the next meeting.
Yeah.
Who's drafting it?
I think you guys can just draft it, the most center to council.
All right. Oh, you draft, draft it next week, and then we can get it to council. So for our next meeting, it, see a copy of it, and then we can advertise for October? I mean, it'd be ideal to get the, the public hearing opened our first October meeting for this.
Right.
I mean.
I agree.
Agree, Mike? Okay.
I agree, I mean. And then eliminates all the hassle trying to do this line just for industrial.
Okay.
The verbiage would be changed and made, you know, property line off that one and corner off that one.
Okay.
Bill, do you have enough time to do that?
I mean, we'll, we'll try.
Yeah.
We'll have it done tomorrow.
EDC prepare it.
EDC prepare it.
Bill can review it.
And bring it to our next meeting.
They've got to get the template, and it's easy.
My only concern is any of this in the aquifer.
No.
No.
No. Because you're downriver.
Which is good, so that's what I mean.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a lot if it was in the aquifer. State regulations wouldn't.
Not in that area.
Yeah, correct.
I just wanted to make sure, yeah, I'm trying to picture the zoning, does the map of the aquifer, I'm going to go that way.
And then, like you said, and the next item would be a PB, PB, commercial, industrial.
True.
Problem solved, done it all.
Item two?
Item two. All right, we'll take care of that for you. Next one would be a car wash zoning bylaw amendment, a proposed amendment. I don't have a copy of.
Everybody does in their packet. Bobby, you want this one? Whatever.
I don't have it.
Yeah, I do, Bob.
Remember.
And this would basically be number 25. 24 is function hall, 25 is our next item.
Do you have it in there?
I don't have one.
It's one of these tables.
So what's your rationale to have it in RC1 and 2?
Well, this is what Les and I were talking about. No, I don't, sorry. I definitely need it commercial, industrial.
Right, I think.
Those are gimmies.
And I think talking with Bob was just looking at RC1, where, where that runs in town and through the area, as well as RC2, which is out on Webster Road.
On Route 16.
Route 16 headed out of town, yeah.
There's no water sewer there, so you wouldn't put a car wash there anyway.
But it's all underneath PB anyways.
Yeah.
So it's under the planning board control if a site can.
What the zoning, the already existing zoning there, is it the flavor of it? I thought the RC was for businesses and like a light commercial, like home type of thing, no?
I think.
Any examples of RC1 or 2?
Well, I only have half the use table.
Yeah, like, I agree with you, a light business versus a hard business.
Yeah.
I mean, most car washes you see around, I'm not saying most, they're usually in a commercial or industrial area.
And attached to a gas station.
Or, like, up by Sheldon, the 12.
Yeah.
Car wash right next to them. Or going off 146, the car wash is over there. They're all kind in that where you see all the commercial items somewhere.
I mean, a two-family is not allowed in RC1. So you're not allowed.
Well. It's not, yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't a yes, but it was mainly, I think when we were, Bob and I were talking about it, off, was, was talking about Route 16 and how Route 16 comes through. So I think that's, that's the fair view, and I think we're looking at, like, where the gas station is, such as the.
Family Feud would be the perfect place, but it's in the aquifer.
Correct.
Which is not allowed.
I mean, including the PB maybe?
Yeah, it should be in PB, yeah.
Commercial, industrial, those three?
Uh, commercial, industrial, DB.
I mean, if we're going to compromise, that's a good compromise.
Yeah. Yeah, that's downtown. It's not a lot, but it's downtown, at least with water sewer. I just don't, yeah. Just because it's PB, it's special permit with condition, you really can't, you're hard pressed to deny that.
No, it was just a draft. It was just a draft.
We did this for discussion, that's why we're discussing it.
I think the PB, commercial, industrial.
Okay.
Those three.
Those three.
PB, and go for it.
I wouldn't even mind, like, a yes for industrial. I wouldn't, I mean, we're going to site plan review anyway. I mean, when a, when a person's coming in and sees that yes, that use is allowed right, they're going to be much more inclined to invest here. And if we're already accepting, and they're already coming for site plan review, why wouldn't we say, yes, we want that in that area?
Yeah, it's better.
I wouldn't want to put it with the houses that don't even get two-family houses.
No.
Or necessarily by right, right in commercial, where you might have a restaurant, a hair salon.
Yeah, it might not fit.
Doesn't really. Well, they do right on Route 12, you got a restaurant right across the street. Yeah, but across the street, not on the same side. They got them on the same side. Plenty of them. Serve your lunches, you go through the car wash, you can eat. That's what they do. In your car.
Do you have anything with a Y for industrial in your book there? If you could just read a couple of the uses that in the past have been done as a right?
Commercial Y in, commercial usage in industrial zone?
Yeah, yeah, sure, yeah.
I knew what you meant, I knew what you meant. The first Y is restaurant. It's a Y in industrial. Restaurant, fast food. Business, professional office, medical or dental office or clinic, bank or other financial institution, insurance, real estate office. And that is it under commercial.
This is very limited.
What do they have in industrial?
In industrial usage, we have any manufacturing use conducted inside a building and soon to be outside a building. No, that's PB, right? That's the PB asterisk. PB asterisk. Wholesale warehouse distribution or storage facility, including mini storage warehouse, is a Y. And the last one is commercial timber harvest with temporary sawmill for not more than 60 days.
And all gas stations are not under.
Gas stations are not listed.
Under what, what are they listed?
Nothing.
They're not listed in this book. They were grandfathered in.
So.
There is not a gas station listed.
Being inclined to put a yes for industrial as a right.
Yeah.
I agree.
I agree. Do you have the two?
We're good?
Yeah.
All right. Cool.
What about repair shops?
Everyone's worried. Auto shops are probably not even in the book.
They do exist?
I know, but not. If gas stations aren't in there, I don't think auto shops are.
Gas shops, gas stations.
We might need, we may need to add them to the book.
Junkyard, Salvage Yard, which is in all the way across.
Horse and buggy, right, that's in there.
Horse and buggy, no.
I think we might need to add a few.
All right, sale and service of motor vehicles. That's under commercial, number two.
Yep.
Motor vehicle light service or repair establishment.
There you go.
All right, so those are in there.
All right.
But gas stations is not.
Well, interesting. All right. So as a, as a next step for this car wash article, we need to put language around it to, right, similar to what we just did?
Definition.
Definition?
That, that's not complicated, the chart basically will take care of that.
Okay.
Use regulation.
All right.
So I'll get an EDC meeting going, get these two items back to you.
Yeah.
You had, had four items?
Yeah, the, the last item.
Bob's got a whole shopping list?
Les and I were talking about maybe forming an action committee to get some of this stuff amongst all the boards. The EDC at their last meeting invited planning board, zoning board, water sewer commissioner had one representative there to discuss car wash, just to get the ball rolling, and other items will be coming up. Do we want to form an action committee by the planning board? Have two members of the planning board, two EDC members, two zoning board, one of the water sewer commissioners. Maybe conservation on there, just to discuss items for transparency. They can go back to their boards and report to them. It's just an idea Les and I was, was tossing around.
Would be your subcommittee?
It would be a subcommittee.
From the EDC?
No, from the planning board.
Well, we can, you can only have planning board members on the, I think, planning board subcommittee.
No, I think you can have a working committee.
Working committee.
Under the direction of the planning board, like an ad hoc committee.
Well, yeah, it was just a.
My, my point, when Bob and I were discussing this, is if, if the EDC or somebody has a specific zoning change, that's fine, they can present it to the board, and the board can adopt it or not adopt it or whatever. If there's more broad discussion and change, it really should come through the planning board.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think when I was talking to Bob about it was mainly if there's like, almost a, you know, subcommittee thinking of, like brainstorming, that's all, brainstorming ideas of, hey, what are all those towns doing, what are we dealing with, what do we need to improve? What, I mean, what has Bob and his committee got feedback that we're missing? You know, such as a car wash, such as some, you know, gas station now that we just realized. And then that would still come back to those boards to say, hey, here's the output of, you know.
Matt, Matt?
Matt? Matt? Here, not on mute.
You're not on mute, can you mute yourself, Matt?
Sorry about that, Ernie. Okay. So, yeah, so the subcommittee was, was just a thing where more of a brainstorming, working with the different, you know, when's the last time we had a, just got a subcommittee with ZBA and sewer commissions and other EBC folks? So getting some brains in the room type of thing, and doing some brainstorming.
Different, different views on a, on a given subject, different ideas.
That's all. What do you think, Ernie?
It's up to the board, I mean, if somebody wants to volunteer to do it.
We've already done one. Is that a nod?
The site by law subcommittee.
That was.
I mean, I'm, I'll be willing to volunteer and help Bob out. I was talking to him about the car wash stuff and he was kind of stuck in the mud with that, so.
Be on Zoom?
No, it would just be once a month. If we really get a bunch of items twice a month as needed.
If, if it's an ad hoc committee, it has to follow the same protocols as any other meeting.
That's why I'm saying it's almost better off just coming in here like you are, throwing it out, have an open discussion and then go.
Post, you have to post.
Right.
Minutes.
Unofficial opinions from like people from the town, like, you know, that work with you without.
Once you start gathering everybody in a room and stuff, it kind of changes it.
Let's think about it. Can we think about it until our September meeting?
I'm just bringing it up for discussion.
I don't know how logistically that will work.
Yeah.
There's not a clear mission if it's just a brainstorming type of group. Getting together. Maybe try to get people to the EDC.
Yeah, or to the EBC, yeah. And then, you know, ZBA was there and.
I mean, I have no problem coming here to you, to the planning board, but now we're leaving out the zoning board, CONCOM, you know, other people's ideas.
Well, I get, what I would say is let's take a step back. What's your goal? What are you looking to get out of this?
I don't think the town's been updated in what, what'd you say, Bob? 25 years?
Yeah.
Some of the things.
Talking zoning districts?
No, 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 just, just talking about EBC stuff, you know, and, and some of the things to improve the town.
Welcoming business.
Welcome business and things like that. So, you know, that was the conversation was like.
I mean, the car wash is one perfect example and we had good input at, at the EDC meeting on that. And I'm taking that input now and presenting it to you. And that's why we came up with these two items tonight. And it came out of that meeting, but we had everybody there. Except planning board.
But you're not really leaving anybody out. I mean, people can watch our meeting, they can watch your meeting, they can watch zoning meetings. So if there's a discussion amongst the meetings, any, anybody can attend any one of those meetings.
Right.
And be part of that discussion if you were bringing it up there.
I think we've had two people attend the EDC meetings since I've been there in three years. We're not well attended, put it that way.
It's hard.
Which means we don't get input from the outside. These are just phone calls we get from businesses.
But if anybody's paying attention to this stuff, then they, they're watching our meeting tonight or they'll watch it on tape or whatever and they'll know what's going on and they'll get in the loop. It's hard to form subcommittees because usually people are already doing something and they don't want to do anymore. You're lucky to get them to do what they're doing.
Get some excitement about your board so that more people will be participating versus creating another sub.
That's fair.
Whatever the board wants to do, I'm fine with it. If you can get somebody to volunteer.
I'd like to just think about it.
Have you gone to the zoning board yet with this or anybody else?
No. No, I just invited everybody to our last EDC meeting.
I mean, the idea of not having a gas station in there in the chart should be thought of.
Well, that's a good item to pick up.
Especially if we're starting to get water and hopefully water and sewer up 16 and things of that nature. Could change that avenue, you know what I mean? For an area out there. So we don't lose out on something by not having it there. And it's simple verbiage. I mean, I'd be okay with doing that, you know, with that. Get some things going.
Okay. Good. Yeah.
All right, so I'm, my four items are done.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Right, so Bill will, will get some of that going for the next.
Probably see Bob, what, tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Is there a set date for the town meeting after this one this Saturday?
No.
They haven't set a date for any fall town meeting yet, right?
There's, I mean.
I keep hearing.
But, you know, who knows?
Yeah, I keep hearing the 12th.
It could be, it could be snowing on the field.
It's where.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Restaurants, outside restaurants are now extended to cold weather.
Great.
All right, Ford, any other questions for Bob?
No, awesome.
Good. Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Coming in.
Yep. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Are you giving me something here, Tracy?
About when's the next time your board meets?
See what?
Time, next time does the EBC meet?
Are we supposed to get one of these?
Yeah.
We're. We'll have to have a special because we won't meet until first week in October, that Wednesday. We were planning on one after the 12th. This Saturday, the 12th is the annual town meeting. We were planning tentatively one for the following Wednesday. To see the, the two articles we have on the warrant, make sure they, they pass, they need further work.
Awesome.
And then we can pick up these, these, the tables in the rezone. Get that down, Pat. Get it. And then just show up at your next meeting.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
I mean, I think it's uniform throughout us, we're okay with it.
I pretty much know what you need now, we'll just put it in writing.
Well, yeah, I think, well, I think you could, yeah, we can draft it and get it into Bill's hands so we can get it. Town council.
Town council review.
For September. And then we can public, I mean, and I think between now and then, we could maybe look at the gas station usage, you know, where we want to put that, since we just realized that tonight that we're missing that. And maybe that. Maybe that goes in the industrial and commercial.
I've been going through other towns zoning bylaws.
Yeah, for the gas station? Okay.
I've been going through other zoning bylaws in the other towns. Hours, just hours and just copying down stuff. Car wash is, is one of them.
Yeah. I've always wondered why there wasn't one.
We have gas stations, but they're old. We don't have new ones. It looks like we won't have new ones until we do something.
It's on the chart, you got it. I agree.
All right. All right. All right.
Think of the stores I mentioned. Yeah.
Awesome.
Cool.
Okay, then thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Bill, what you want?
Thank you, I'll see you tomorrow.
All right, we're into, into our additional business part of the agenda. Bill, what do you want to take?
Take Monor, I guess.
White and Reservoir, update and request for lot releases?
We've got a whole bunch of people here online.
On what?
Online.
Online, okay.
So you should have a letter from Jen Gablitz in your packet. If you don't have any of these, look it up. You can have a letter from Andrew Survey that's in color.
We do.
Oh, this fault.
You should have, if you don't have, distribute it.
Anybody have those?
Yes. I don't have that, but I can look along. Yeah, I've got that one, but I don't have the picture.
Oh, it's, it's hidden.
Picture of the.
Christmas colors.
Christmas tree. You got one of those?
I've got one of those. I didn't see the Christmas colors. Mike, do you get the Christmas colors?
I don't have the Christmas tree.
Yep, thanks.
So why don't I start with the Andrews?
Thanks, sir.
You might recall at last meeting, we had a conversation, Mr. Rannieri was on the line and we had some issues with the plates and with the catch basins and manholes.
Yeah.
Were kind of sticking up.
You sent us pictures?
We sent, I sent pictures, yeah. That, that's been resolved. They did put proper plates and they backfilled properly on the structures. So it doesn't appear to be an issue anymore.
Okay.
We did proceed with coring the road. So we did a total of four cores and this is addressed in the Andrews letter. The depth of the asphalt.
You might want to mute someone.
Yeah, it's like microscopic, I gotta see who.
Yeah.
I don't know why.
Someone sounded like they were having a Slurpee. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So supposed to have two and a half inches of binder. You'll see that we did a total of four tests on the road. Two of the tests had two inches, one had one and three quarters and apparently one had three inches. I haven't officially gotten these back from the testing company. This is Andrews, who was out there, there's photos attached, so.
Okay, okay. They did the coring?
JTC did the coring. So. I, I think, you know, obviously the deficiencies need to be addressed and repaired. Repaired and Jude, I'm not sure if you want to speak to that at all?
Through the chair. Bill, did you say three corings or four? Okay, that's what it looks like.
With the testing and I took the pictures and took the measurements on my own. The coring company captured them, but then you can pretty hopefully in pictures that I provided in the letter. There was like note that it was two, two inch, three inch and one and three quarter and what it does is prove it's what we two and a half, which is half of top core. That obviously didn't happen in certain areas, areas that force there and left. The goal is to achieve a four inch. Well, that for the roadway section of south. And we were wanting to propose to do that deficiency and the shortcomings in binder core was to install two and a quarter inches of asphalt when we finished core. That would bring the, the area that's giving it two quarters, that would bring that up for it. Everywhere else without overboard. That's our proposal, the solution.
That's true.
We do, we do have a new contractor on board and he's out there cleaning up the site right now. He's identified some of the deficiencies that are, were on Longwood Construction. He's the one that fixed the catch basins where they had the plates sticking up in the air, which is a safety hazard. So he's out there cleaning right now and he's got curb on site and he wants to start setting that, but we have to deal with the pavement thickness first because that determines the curb height. So we're hoping to get a direction from the board as to what they think that we should do out there. And my suggestion, and I talked it over with the chief engineer at Andrews, and we, we determined that two and a quarter inches of finished pavement would be adequate. Also, the contractor, James from Rhino Construction, he also talked his paper and his paper said that would be the easiest and smoothest solution to the problem, or to address the unfinished pavement. Bill and I and Mr. Pace discussed the issue of if we need more pavement out there, then the bond has to get increased slightly to accommodate the three quarters of an inch of pavement over the 700 foot plus road. So we would adjust the, the surety and, you know, adjust the estimate on our end to make up that difference to ensure that Mr. Pace installs the current amount of pavement when he goes to, when he's done building the houses and right before road acceptance, which is typically when the final grade, kind of the finish grade gets installed. So that's, that's what I got.
So that, that's consistent with what I was thinking for, for remedy to the issue of the deficiency.
I like it.
You know, I'm, I'm happy to hear that they're proposing to go by the worst case scenario, basically. You know, in, in top code, by that worst case scenario.
Okay, that's, yeah, I'm good with that.
I mean, I'm relatively new to the project. I know the project's been around for a while, but from the sense that I get from Mr. Pace is we just want to do the right thing and move forward and get this thing taken care of and, and make everybody happy and, and just move forward.
I just have one question. I have no problem with the two and a quarter and all that. Let's say they decide to put down an inch and three quarter and it's all down. Is there enough money in the surety to rip that road up and put down what's supposed to be there?
Well, that's what he's saying. They're conceding that there's a deficiency and that they're willing to increase the surety by that deficient amount.
Right, but that surety cover, if, if they don't put down the two and a quarter, the cost of tearing up what they put down or grinding it to get a good coat down. You can't put down a half inch of asphalt, as you know, right to make up. I forgot a half inch, sorry, I'll put down a half inch.
Right.
It's not going to happen. You either got to grind it up or tear it up to put down a couple inches to pack it all down. So is there enough surety there to cover that?
So.
And should there be?
Jude, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the manner that they would repair it is put down tackifier over the whole surface, asphalt tackifier, and then just put down a lift of two and a quarter inches instead of an inch and a quarter.
Correct.
Or an inch and a half.
Correct.
Right, but what I'm saying is, they, they went short on the binder.
Yep.
They decided to go short on the top coat is what I'm getting at.
Well, we're going to monitor that, I mean.
This here was supposed to be monitored too, but they never bothered to call to let you know they were.
No, no, it's a, it's a new contract.
So we.
Leonard was out there and JTC was out there.
When they did the original?
Yes.
Okay. All right. But they still put it down and put it down thin?
They did. So I did send the results to JTC, to Leonard. You know, I immediately got a call back from Corey and we talked about it. He, he could only speculate as to how that happened. And it could be any number of things, could be, wasn't fully compacted when they measured it. They measured at the side of the road, said at the center of the road, you know.
Yeah, and actually variables.
You know, there's variables.
So it's all just variables, yeah.
And these pavers go out, you know, they're constantly turning the screw and, you know.
Well, that's what I'm getting at is, and that's why I'm bringing it up. They do the top coat and they go, like you just said, they turn the screw and all of a sudden there's only an inch and three quarter going down.
Right.
The road's all done.
Right.
They start doing core testing and we're short a half inch.
Right.
Zeroing in the surety to go in and tear that back up and or grind it before you put down the correct top coat.
Well, you know, the remedy, if there's a question, if there's a question, we can always pour it after the fact.
Spot test it.
If it's deficient, we, we don't release the surety.
Yeah. Yeah, we use spot test.
We don't have it for the main part, too. We have it for the.
Correct, but is there enough surety to cover all that as well?
If you're only going to grind it off.
The surety originally included the binder course and the top course. So if it was deficient, if we went to, say that the two and a half inches went down and then we were deficient on the finish course, that's what the surety is there for, to correct that situation.
So. Yeah, so, so, yeah, I, I think. I mean, we have to look at what we're holding for surety, the dollar amount, and then if that needs to be adjusted, period, period.
They're saying it's going.
Okay, so, so Bill can. Bill can review that and.
Stuff that's going there that's.
Put, put a number on it, the surety to be adjusted. We're good with that, Bill?
So the surety, just, just so we're clear, just includes the top coat, it doesn't include the binder. We established it after the binder's been in place. But nonetheless, I, you know, I'm going to review it. Not going to make a recommendation to, you know, to release the lots until we're in agreement on the value. So.
Do you know how much we're holding right now in surety?
Off the top of my head, I don't. Bob, do you know?
Yeah, it's about $36,000.
Okay. Okay, anything else on that, Bill?
Not on that issue. I, we also got a letter in the packet from attorney Gablitz seeking.
She's online.
Authorization to. Apply for and receive three additional building permits. So along those lines, we can go to the decision. The only thing I want to point out to the board pertains to this transfer of land to the Conservation Commission. I'll read it quickly and this, this is referenced in several locations, I'm just going to read one.
Yep.
Prior to the release of any covenants, the five acre parcel of open space lands shall be conveyed and accepted by the Douglas Conservation Commission or Open Space Committee. However, notwithstanding the above, the planning board at its discretion may release up to but not exceeding two of the laws prior to said conveyance. Planning board finds that such release is consistent with the intent of this decision and the zoning bylaws of the town of Douglas and will facilitate the expedition's completion of the project. So, so essentially, the request, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, the request really is not consistent with that, so I.
Bill. Who's doing that interference?
I think it's Bob's.
Okay.
So, so I'm just pointing out that, that the request is not consistent with the way the language is in the decision. And it's really just this issue of the transfer of the conservation park.
Yep. How many, we can release up to two lots, is that what it says?
How many, yep, we can release up to two lots, is that what it says?
Which we've already released one.
And we've already done that, haven't we?
We've released two lots and actually they've gotten occupancies. Bob, I'm sure you've heard from the building department, occupancies on the two, yeah.
Now, what about the sidewalk situation up there? I got straightened up?
That's how I'm going. Um, we had a meeting today, Mike, with the contractor, with Bob and with Jude, and it was a vast improvement over what we've had. It's a new contractor out there. It's, uh, Rhino Construction.
Okay, 'cause I've been out there twice.
Yeah.
So it's been a mess.
Yeah, when were you out there?
I was out there a week ago.
A week ago, just so.
Okay.
No, so.
Give us, give us a week and you'll, you'll see a difference. Um, we've identified the sidewalk issues. We've identified some of those sidewalks kind of run down the road and clean that up. We know we have to cut back some pavement. They over paved down at the end of the cul-de-sac. They know we have to, we know we have to bring in, um, some material and rework the sidewalk and configuration of it.
Yeah.
Um, that stuff's all been discussed with the previous contractor, this contractor before I even got to, to, to tell him my law and revision stuff. He identified most of this stuff, so he seems to be right on top of this stuff. So like I said, you, you probably haven't seen a difference up there because the site, the, the whole site's been dormant, but it's been a week and, uh, you'll, you'll see some, you'll see some cleanup. He's got machines out there and he's moving stuff around and it seems like he's, he's got his finger on the ball.
I agree, you know, um, I, I, I've seen them cleaning up today, which was encouraging because that's one, one of the issues that I've had. Um, you can, the quality of the contractor is coming through, you know, with only a couple of days on site.
No, which is awesome. The, the only thing I want to say is it's been a sad taste in the mouth from what's gone on here in the past. So I think, I know they want some, some releases, but why don't we wait till the next meeting? See what's going on?
Right.
See if true faith is going on here and so, take it from that point. Right now, I'm not ready to release anything.
I don't think we can release them.
Well, it's, it's not consistent with the decision. I did get an email from the conservation agent and, um, there was a little confusion on who has the authority over receiving the conservation property. And.
Okay.
The Conservation Commission needs to, you know, if they're happy with the deed, they need to sign it. If they're not happy with it, they need to make changes to it and then sign it. Um, and, and, you know, I, I saw some emails back and forth today. In an effort to try and get this on track, the Conservation Commission needs to button that part up so that we can release lots.
Yep.
In accordance with the decision.
Well, that's, that's between the conservation and the developer, right?
Tracy.
So, uh, thank you very much, Bill, for in, introducing earlier this evening, um, because I think we do have a plan now. Uh, the, some conservation did, um, pull together an email and I think we'll see a little bit more movement. So, uh, if you're right, it was a little bit of a, of this communication as to who was going to take the reins.
Okay, Jennifer, thank you for speaking. Um, I, I need people to identify who they are because we have a new person doing our mini minutes, so, just so she can get it correct.
Thank you.
So the last meeting, we had.
Yeah, Tracy.
We had approved, we voted to accept the land.
Okay.
Pending approval from town council because the verbiage is still not correct.
Okay.
In the deed.
Sure.
So that's what we were waiting for.
Okay.
That it to be correct.
Okay.
Because there's specific language that needed to be added.
Right, because it's.
It was not good enough.
Okay.
Fair enough.
And that was at your last meeting that was discussion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you, you think that'll be wrapped up at your next meeting or?
Uh, if we have the deed.
Yeah.
And it's approved by town council.
Okay.
I don't see why not.
Yeah, okay.
So through the chair, Bill has.
And that's the 14th, so, and then we still need to establish additional surety. So we should just move this to two weeks.
Yeah, I agree. And I think also we, we want the communication inspection, you know, the schedule updated accordingly.
We reviewed that with them today and it's a completely different scenario.
No, I agree. I just, so we've got a go, a go-forward schedule?
Yep.
That's all.
And that issue, I don't think it was not a planning board issue, it was a gentleman with a family and that's hopefully the gentleman's doing well.
Look it up, let's see.
Yeah.
Yep.
The, uh, the only other issue or discussion they had was about the drainage there. Something about the water going down along the road.
Yeah.
That and this, do you know what that was involved in all this?
Well, I think as part of the site cleanup, the new contractor's going to resolve a lot of those issues. Um, you know, they've got the granite curb on site now, which is going to help control the runoff. It's, you know.
It's going to take a little bit.
I've seen progress, yeah.
He's got a load of, um, straw waddles coming to, around the catch basins to collect so the water doesn't go past him. He's got a series of erosion control devices that he's, he's, I heard him watering on the phone this morning. He's going on a few of the lots to minimize erosion. Uh, so he, he's got a handle on that also. So hopefully the, the catch basins are full, he's going to have those cleaned. Uh, he's got silt sacks coming in for the catch basins to capture any other water coming on. He cleaned up the erosion from the sidewalk that eroded down into the road. Cleaned that up today already. Um, so, yeah.
Awesome. No, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Could you please identify yourself?
I'm sorry, I'm Jude Dobbin from Andrews Engineering, SRA.
Okay, I'm not sure if you did at the beginning, so I just wanted to make sure we get it for the meeting minutes. Thank you.
Douglas away.
Okay, Bill?
So to go full circle, it's good again, and just to go full circle with this, in the spirit of moving forward with the, the cleanup and the road construction and getting the curbing, does everybody agree that it makes sense to do the two and a quarter inches on finished pavement? Because that determines how high he sets the curb.
Yes. Yes, that makes sense.
I think we're all good with that.
I just wanted to make that a little share so we didn't.
The only thing, the only thing I'm going to add to that is that's pending JTC's report.
Yeah, okay.
I'm assuming, Jude, that it's going to be consistent with what you gave us, but I just got to say that.
Yeah. Okay. So, put them on the next meeting?
Well, what I'm going to do is wait for them to respond positively about the con comp stuff before I schedule them. I assume we'll get a, you know, a transmittal, Jennifer, showing it's been recorded at the registry of deeds, um, along with a request and actually the lot release form for the three lots you're looking for.
Lot's aren't mine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further? We're good? All right, hopefully we'll see you at the next meeting then?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
A lot of people leaving.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, yeah, thanks.
Okay, Bill, number two?
Woodland.
What is number two?
Woodland Road.
Woodland Road.
Acceptance?
Woodland Road. Um, so I need a vote, and John Farnol left, but I did talk to him about it too before he left. Um, I need a vote from the board to recommend, uh, to, that punch list has been completed for Woodland Road and is acceptable as public way from your perspective.
So has it, has it been?
Why are we talking about a punch list?
Yeah, it's a punch.
We recommend it to be.
Well, I think, I think the, I think the way, because the discussion happened with the finance committee, I believe, about the warrant article to accept it as a public way. And I believe that they referenced the punch list in their motion that it, it has to be acceptable. The punch list has to be acceptable to the planning board. So that's why I'm having that.
Added in there?
Has been completed.
The, the punch list has been completed. The only area that is, um, unfinished is they loaned and seceded, so there were some boulders in the right way. We had them pull the boulders out of the right way, loan and seceded the area, they've done that. There's no education on that.
Yeah, yeah, as, as expected, yes, yeah. Okay, yeah, okay.
All right, anybody else have any questions?
No.
Want to make that motion?
So, so Bill, do you have the, the phases? Because we're not accepting the whole road all the way to the end. We're accepting.
Three, four, and five, I believe. I'd have to look at.
Yeah, because it's not six.
But, I mean, I'd rather go by the stations.
Okay.
Less.
Yeah, I just.
If you want, I could grab.
Yeah, I just don't want to leave it open-ended.
Yeah.
We need to mod.
Well, I'd rather be more defined. I know it's not phase six.
Yeah, we're accepting it, so.
But I don't want to accept the whole road.
Fine, it's fine, that's because it's going to become a town road now.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah. Got to be clear. Sorry for the sticking point.
Or to what Mark or what they got to set at, yeah.
Yeah.
Except it up to Mark or the punch list has been.
Yeah.
Created, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. I agree with that one.
Catch, like any second.
Well, we're something it.
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
This one, the extension for the accessory apartment, 78 pine?
Coming up, yeah.
Shouldn't that be a public hearing?
Um.
We didn't, we were missing it. We were missing the verification.
Right, I think some of that should be in your packet.
No, only one thing, but it's not.
Yeah, Bill and I were discussing that this afternoon. One of them's, we were just talking about the accessory apartment thing that's coming up.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. One of them's been, um, verified that taxes were paid and everything.
You know, but we already voted on it. It's a public.
Yeah, I'm not sure which one we did. It was two we didn't, it was two we didn't do. We did one, we didn't do two.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's continue with this.
Up to station zero, Woodland Road, station zero plus zero zero to station 32 plus 43.7.
Zero plus zero zero to plus 32 point.
43 dash point seven. Thank you, Bill.
So you, you need a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So a motion to accept the punch list? That's been completed.
Approved the punch list.
That's been completed on Woodland Road from station zero plus zero zero to station 32.47?
32 plus 43.70.
43.70.
And we recommend for acceptance.
And recommend.
Recommended for acceptance, is that how we meet?
Yep.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Motion been made by Mike Z, seconded by Les. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Les Stevens' eye.
Mike Rocco, aye.
Mike Swoker, aye. Aaron Sokran, aye.
Tracy Sharkey, aye.
Dick Schultz, aye.
Motion carries.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, Bill.
No, that's okay.
Okay. All right. Yeah, we did one link, extension for an accessory apartment special permit.
So this is, you might recall, we have three of them at the last meeting.
Yep.
This is one of the three. Two that we had questions on.
Right.
The second one still has issues.
Okay.
Am I going crazy?
Isn't this a public hearing?
What?
Are we just?
That's an extension.
Extension, so it's not, it's not requesting a new one?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah.
I thought we drew.
Yeah.
No, that was the.
It wasn't finished.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can now vote and sign on the 78 pine?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, because I was.
Yep. Deal.
Okay, anybody else have any questions on it?
Nope, I'm good.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, the, the issue is just about whether they submitted this tax verification for, right?
Yeah, we didn't have it.
Yep, they did.
So. He did, yeah.
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 Case closed.
Make a motion to grant the extension for 78 Pine Street.
Second that.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike Z. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Les Stevens' eye.
Mike Rocco, aye.
Mike Swoker, aye. Aaron Sokran, aye.
Tracy Sharkey, aye.
Motion, motion carries.
Good.
Okay, we already did meeting minutes.
Yep.
All right. Future agenda items. All right, Bill, anything?
Do.
Yep, okay. All right. We have people in the audience that are here for something, they're not on the agenda?
Okay.
Okay. Name and address, please.
Here's Madison, 93 Davis.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll just recuse myself from this discussion.
Okay. All righty, the record show that Tracy has recused herself from part of this discussion.
Yep.
All right, yes.
Okay, I'm here because I want to recap what happened from the last time we were here to now. The last time that we were here, we all voted and we agreed on waivers and conditions that a timeline was put by the 20th of the 24th of August.
No, there was no timeline set for it.
It was 20th to 24th.
I specifically, I specifically said that I, we would try to have it signed for you before the next meeting.
Before the next meeting?
Yes, before this meeting.
Before this next meeting, because you specifically told me it was the fastest way and would be most expedient if we had done it in that fashion.
If everything came in, okay, yes.
Okay, but what happened was, um, I did serve the, I did give to the town clerk a letter from my lawyer of the 14 day rule in the building bylaws that from close of hearing, you have 14 days for close of hearing to give me my draft decisions. My draft decisions weren't even begun. I know as of the 13th, when it closed, the following Monday, rather than work on my draft decisions, there was a mass email that went out about traffic analysis, there's traffic, um, up in Cape Cod that had nothing to do with me. So rather than work on my draft decision, Mr. Kundoff decided to work on something else And then continually goes on and says that he's too busy and he's working on it. I have come before this board in good faith. I have served this board in good faith. I'm asking this board to give the same thing back to me, because the board has been very good to me. The last hearing, you did everything you could to close this hearing. The hearing before that, you did everything you could to close this hearing. But it seems to be that one person keeps acting on his own accord against this board. So, I served the board, I served the town at nine-thirty on September third. Before I served this, I came in on September first on a Tuesday, and I respectfully requested where the draft decision was, why it was taken so long, and that the timeline had already passed on August twenty-seventh. We have passed Hundred Day, we have passed every bylaw for me to have my draft decision. I was told, I'm working on it, I'm working on it, I'm working on it. I accept that I was, that it was done as of the twenty-seventh of August, we passed the fourteen-day law. The law is pursuant MGL Forty-A Fifteen, which is the fourteen-day rule. So, what I'm saying is, is I have come before this board, in the beginning, it took six meetings to get to having a draft decision, but still was not completed. The first three took to get to peer review, that I had to pay for. And I had to pay for it because the town engineer was too busy. And yet, even when I paid for it, he was too busy, but he still had to review it. Review it and add his own comments, which prolonged it, prolonged it, and prolonged it. And every time I gained some ground and came before the board, three meetings, four meetings in, and satisfied ninety-eight percent of twenty-seven questions, this board was astounded that I was able to do that with my engineers. Ninety-eight percent. But we agreed we would go to a fifth meeting. And at that fifth meeting, when I satisfied everything again, I was promised, promised, it took five weeks to get to that fifth meeting, that I would have a draft decision done. When we get to that fifth meeting, this board wants to close. This board wants to work in good faith to move me along. But the town engineer works on his, on his side again, and he's calling for a traffic study, which we all agreed was a traffic study, and that it would be my consultant that would put that together, because we don't have cannabis numbers. And then I was promised, I was given an apology that it wasn't done because it was too busy, but I was promised again by this gentleman right here, Mike, we're gonna cross the Ts, we're gonna dot the Is, and we're gonna finish this one more meeting, let's just go one more meeting. And we did. We went to meeting number six. And again, I satisfied exactly what the peer review asked for, a traffic management with the police department. Pulled it out again, everything this board asked me for, parking spaces, traffic management, overflow. And what do I get? I get the town engineer one more time, let's do a turning lane. So astounding that even this gentleman right here said, don't you think it's a little late for that? I don't want to use the word obstruction. I have been delayed, I have been obstructed, I have been given broken promises by one person. Let me finish.
You, you, you kept one, 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 go ahead.
So, I have a paper that was put before you at nine-thirty on September third. The only action that is allowed right now is for this board to choose to appeal or not appeal. That's all. If you don't appeal, it's deemed certified. Now, in the interim, on, on the same day of three-thirty, the town engineer put a draft decision together and recorded it. I did not see it. I have never once, from April seventeenth to this day, have been put in the circle of an email, or a phone call, or a text, or anything to review anything that's come from the town engineer. You can't issue a draft decision unless the applicant's decent, and the applicant approves of that. So consequently, what happened was, a draft decision went in that I didn't approve, that was embellished on, and actually was defrauded. What we discussed was of what was, our decisions were gonna be, is not what was recorded. Things were added. So, we have a falsifying of records, we have a delay of everything. So, I'm here today to give you the timeline of what's happened, and how I've been here, and I have been patient, and then finally had to take it in my own hands by law to deem it complete. I'm asking you from this board, I have no intentions, even though we have no conditions because of this, because there's no conditions, I still will act in complete good faith of working with the town manager, working with the bylaws, doing whatever it takes to get my business up and running legally and above board.
Mr. Chairman, I want to speak on this, if I may.
Go ahead.
I was there at the meetings, too. May I?
Continue, can you just?
Aaron Socran, Planning Board member, elected by the people, on this board. I've sat in at all these meetings. I think the applicant, at the last meeting, we heard, I heard, September, you know, August twentieth and August twenty-fourth. I don't want to get into this much about the applicant, because the applicant has worked in good faith. At the last meeting, we put it in the hands of the town engineer to finish this up, and you were gonna sign, Mr. Chairman, hopefully by the twenty-fourth, and when it wasn't signed.
No, no, that's not true.
This is what I know.
This is not.
I'm giving my opinion here.
Okay.
You know, we're all on the same board here, but we want to move this business forward today. Somehow, I want to avoid all these lawyers, I want to avoid all this other stuff, I want to get them approved, I want to have them starting to do their work, what she's been working on for months and months and months. We're the planning board, we're supposed to be assisting people through this process, and we have supported that at the last meeting, and now we're hearing this thing blowing up. So, we need some answers here, because this is not fair to this applicant, and I want, if the board here was working in favor of this, at the last meeting, I thought we're all set. So, I want to know why we're not all set, why, why we're in this position now?
I don't know why we're, I, I.
Let's, let's dialogue.
So, just through, just, just through the chair, just through the chair, I watched the tape. What was stated, we talked about a target date of August twentieth and a, and a deadline date of the twenty-third, that's what was stated. Bill came back and said, said, okay, it would be reasonable to hit the August twenty-fourth date, he would be surprised if it would take longer. He emailed town council that afternoon of August thirteenth, Jay, the draft decision. Okay? That's what was, it was stated in the meeting on August thirteenth, so, and I don't think we saw a draft decision, or the applicant didn't see a draft decision, on August thirteenth.
No.
I mean, but that's usually what, we do usually share draft decisions with all parties, right? So, we've got.
I don't remember any promises being made, and I remember specifically stating that the best we could, we could move this, continue it to another meeting, or we could try to get it done before the next meeting, and I would sign it, and I think that would probably be the quicker way to go.
Which we agreed.
Rather than.
We agreed with that.
Yeah, we agreed with it.
We already did, said that, yeah.
Yeah, we stated that on the.
But the word twenty-fourth, I didn't pick this up, it's probably on the, you know, on TV or something.
And it, the decision was finally drafted, and I signed it last week, and that's before this meeting.
But apparently, there were other things in there that the applicant wasn't privy to, there were things added, other conditions, and, and apparently, I'm saying apparently, because I, the applicant did not receive this in an email.
I have an email here that it was, that it was mailed to me on September eighth. I have an email right here, certified from Mr. Kundav, that he stamped it in and mailed me a copy of the draft decision on September eighth. I am the applicant who has never been in a loop.
I know what's going on.
I am the applicant that didn't even see my own conditions that were served, and I have a copy of what he put on, and what I did not agree to. And there was a copy that was marked up, that was supposed to go, but was completely ignored. So, how do you, how do you draft something up, don't give it to the board, don't give it to the applicant, don't get an approval and an agreement to all these things, and then, and then put it in and have it stamped in? And how do you stamp something in after you've already been served by a lawyer? That doesn't make any sense to me. The only thing that was before this board, after I did this, was will you or will you not appeal what I put before you? Because I don't care what time you gave me, it was done on August twenty-seventh, you have fourteen days. I didn't walk into September.
Yeah, okay, all right, hold on. There is, there is no time limit right now. Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
So, in your packet, you have the correspondence from.
I read it.
The applicant's attorney and town council. They're at odds on what certification is, okay? I think it's fairly clear myself, but it's between the lawyers in my opinion. But I, let's get the lawyers out of this, though, can't we? I think it's pretty clear, actually. Is there a way that we can do this?
The letter clearly says, the board, not the attorneys, the board is the one that has the right to appeal this. If you don't appeal, if you don't appeal this tonight, then you deem me certified.
No, I don't see it that way.
Because it says right here from the lawyer that it's the.
From what lawyer, your lawyer?
No, my lawyer.
Well, our lawyer, our lawyer doesn't agree with that, so, if you, if you want to take this to court, you can do that.
But Ernie, excuse me, Aaron Socran here.
No, no, I didn't recognize you, so, I don't.
My apologies.
Hold on. Yep.
I mean.
I came before you in good faith one more time. I'm asking the board to finally, once and for all, uphold what is in front of you. I have no conditions on me because of the paper that I filed, but that doesn't mean that I'm not gonna continue to be the person that I am, and work within every bylaw, sign-wise, traffic-wise, everything that you expect of me, I'm gonna do in good faith, because that's who I am. I'm asking you, who's been trying for three meetings to get this done, to do the same for me. It's not that hard. All you have to do is accept that I am moving forward, I have given you everything, I have, everything you've not wanted of me, I have given, and I'm still gonna abide by it. That's it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
Can I just make a few more comments?
Yep, and nobody interrupt.
And I'm not going to get into debate about it.
No, we're not gonna get into debate. Go ahead.
I rewatched all the meetings before I prepared the decision. I was actively working on the decision.
Yep.
I was called a liar, and, you know, that's besides the point. At the last meeting, there was discussion about a timeline, but my impression of what the board ended up with, that there was no set timeline. I told everyone that I would do my best to get it done as quickly as I could.
You did.
And that's what I did. And we followed proper protocol, we're confusing, it seems we're confusing some zoning bylaws versus site plan review requirement.
Yep.
And that's where the timelines are at a discrepancy. Long story short, I worked as quickly as I could to get this decision out. I emailed it to everybody, I did have a decision, our template, now, I said it was a bare-bones decision, but nonetheless, that was distributed at the last hearing. And, you know, lastly, I've been working through the representative, and that's why I emailed a copy to the decision. So, everyone, you know, I've gotten feedback from Les, from Jake, from Mike. I got feedback before, you know, it was finalized. So, we had discussion, there were a couple of things that I didn't recall that Les brought up, so I talked to Ernie about, to get the clarification. And so. I follow the workflow process and stuff like that, so, you know, it takes time.
Yeah, no, no, I, I think, Bill, the normal process, don't you share a draft decision with the applicant? Isn't that?
At the last meeting.
Okay, well, no, but do you share a soft copy with, like, like Byron or other engineering firms? Is it shared over email? I'm just, I'm just thinking what the standard process is with sharing a draft decision for them to weigh in on.
Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. That's the reality. You know.
No, no, I'm just, it's kind of gray, right? Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't, but I'm kind of surprised at that. I thought it would be standard just to share it.
Let's not worry about sharing stuff like this. Where do we go tonight? Where do we go tonight to make this whole and get this done?
Well.
What's the pleasure of the board tonight? What can we do?
My, my, my feeling is that we, the, the decision was drafted, I signed it after, after input from new people.
Yep.
They brought lawyers into it. So, if they want to, and she's, and they're looking for constructive approval, saying that we didn't meet a timeline.
But, but, but talk about the conditions that are, that are just acceptable.
Aaron, Aaron, he asked me to answer the question. So, they brought their lawyers into it, they're asking for a constructive approval now. Our lawyer says that they can't do that. There is no timeline because of the.
There's a bylaw, there's a state law, you have fourteen days from the close.
Your decision, your decision was done, drafted, and I signed it. You've brought lawyers into it now, you want constructive approval. Well, if, if you want to do that, then we're going a whole new route.
I'm appealing to the chair, are you, are you saying?
I, name and address, please.
John Wozniak, One Fifty-Nine Hartford Avenue East, Menlo, Massachusetts. Counsel to the applicant.
Yeah, on behalf of the applicant? Okay.
Can I recognize, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you are recognized.
Thank you, sir. I'm hearing here that for some reason, what your conduct is gonna be derived from is per retaining counsel, which I think is inappropriate, but let me go back to when you signed it. You signed it after the lawyers were involved, but after you got the notice. And you signed it, I think you said after the board reviewed the conditions submitted by Mr. Kundav. At what meeting did that occur? I'm just curious. Because I, I, I see that the conditions were modified, I'm just curious, it's a what public.
It was a motion made at the meeting that Bill would write up the conditions and the approval, and the vote, board voted that if it was in agreement with what we, that I could sign off on it without the rest of the board doing it.
But you, you understand that my client has brought to your attention that the conditions that you folks discussed at your planning board meeting are not the conditions you signed off on. Mr. Kundav changed those conditions.
And here are the changes.
No, that's the way it was discussed at the board, that I would review the meetings and base it. I think it was, with respect to the chair, I think that the minutes and the conditions that were previously submitted to this board and reviewed, and give tentative approval are not what Mr. Kundav had you sign, and when he had dates stamped at the town clerk.
Then you can make that appeal if you want to.
No, no, I'm bringing that to your attention.
Yeah, okay.
Just disregard it, that's your problem. Is there a pleasure of the board? Do we have that ability?
Just, just, Aaron, one second. Through the chair.
Yep.
So, council knows in the room and stuff like that, so, Mr. Kundav did send out a Ninety-three Street draft decision to the members of the board for us to review on September second. This is sometimes standard process that Bill sends it up. Yeah, you know, whether it's in the meeting or whether in an email, for feedback and discussion, so.
Not discussion.
Well, not for discuss, for feedback.
Comments. But there was no ability to discuss.
Yes, no, no ability to discuss, just comments to go back to Bill. Again.
Blind copy.
Yeah, I blind copied everybody, and there was in that, members replied back regarding some typos, correct, corrective statements and stuff like that, and items. That was done on September second, in that timeframe, so, when, when those were sent. And I think most of the board members replied back to you within forty-eight hours?
I asked for a quick.
Correct. Okay, just for clarification, when, when we had a draft decision.
Yep.
That was processed around the board. And there was one that was circulated on the August twenty, August thirteenth at our board meeting as well, right? Another draft, so.
Now, you're telling me that the protocol of that, when he, when he was, Mr. Kundav was specifically asked on September second at eleven-twenty-nine to forward me, Karen from GBI, who is the engineer on this, and the applicant a draft decision? Is it your protocol, and is it standard practice that the applicant is not allowed to see what was drafted to make sure it was correct?
Of course not.
Well, I was not, because you know what Mr. Kundav's response was? It was, draft is being reviewed by council and, by council and.
Board members.
Board members. When I hear back and incorporate their edits, I will forward to you and the board at the same time. Not the applicant, no. The applicant gets it mailed to her on September eighth after it's all done. Is that protocol? That I'm not allowed to see, that it was correct and agreed upon? This is defaulting. And with that default, I'm asking the board to make a vote.
And, and if I may say, and I'm a newbie to the board, this is only my first time on it, that I got the changes in the, you know, email, like everybody else blind copied, I did not feel comfortable or well-versed enough without the, you know, without my board members discussing those conditions. So, I feel I didn't have that input. I wasn't, you know, we all give input to one another, and there are some more experienced than others. I have certain backgrounds that I can bring to this board, but I didn't feel comfortable answering that, Bill, I just didn't, because I didn't have my fellow board members here in a public hearing sense to answer those questions, so.
Then we, then we shouldn't have closed the public hearing, and we should have continued it for another meeting.
We did not think that there would be additional conditions. We said, off to the races. She's, he's got the conditions, let's sign this thing up, let's get this person going. That was the pleasure of the board that evening of the last meeting.
Yeah.
And things did change. I'm not for or against anybody. I'm pro us doing our job here and being honest to, and no one's being dishonest, I think everybody's just doing their job, but it's just, we need to get results.
Yeah, I, through the chair, I think, I think what would have been extremely helpful is showing the delta between the August thirteenth draft, again, starting point, you know, and then where did we end up with and who provided those other comments in there?
I think August thirteenth draft.
Yeah, so, because there's a delta between the two, right? From, from the final.
This is change, right.
The one that you signed to when the one that was distributed. And, and we knew that the draft decision from August thirteenth was, you know, ninety-five percent there.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
No, I said bare bones.
Okay.
Bare bones, yeah. That's what you did.
Okay. But you, that, if that was bare bones, but it went to Jay for his review, right? So.
And I didn't hear back from Jay.
Okay, no, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, because, I mean, so, my understanding was, was Jay was gonna, that it was almost done. I mean, if you're gonna send it off to legal counsel, you know, it's basically the.
For final review.
Yeah, to tie it off, that's it.
That's where it had to go, back, it had to go for final review, legal counsel.
But bare bones is one thing, but are, are complete. So, if, if it wasn't complete on the thirteenth, or fairly complete, why would it go to legal counsel then? You know what I mean? If, if I got something thirty percent done, why would I send it to legal counsel? So, I think my interpretation was, was when something goes to legal counsel, it's, you know, it's ninety-five percent done, you know, it's taking it at the last.
Final review, any comment?
Yeah, final hurdle.
And in the final review, I can cue up where the most important piece in here was the whole traffic study, the whole traffic, that I was supposed to, traffic management with the police department. It was said that after I opened, right there on video, after I opened, that the board could choose if there was an issue to revisit it. That's not what.
And the police chief was gonna work with you on it.
That's not what. The police chief was, you know, I have, I've worked so closely with everybody, I have no intentions of not giving them above board. I'm here asking the board to make a decision tonight and vote that it's done is done. It's been too much, it's been too long, and I, as the applicant, have been completely excluded from a decision, which is not, it's not protocol. It's just not.
Bill, anything?
I mean, I, I'm not gonna get in a debate with her. I disagree with the assessment, I think, you know, there's her perspective, there's my perspective. This is not, I, I drafted a decision that I garnered from the meeting. I sent it to the board members for their input.
Yep.
I incorporated, I'd say ninety percent of the input I had. The two comments that Les had that I didn't recall, I discussed with you, Mr. Chairman.
Correct.
And that's the way we want.
Okay, is, is there anything to, to what they're saying about, we added something? There's nothing added.
Well, she, I think she's saying that I misunderstood, or she misunderstood.
Right.
The conditions surrounding the traffic study.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so.
It's the draft decision that they've been presented with, with our conditions that we discussed at our previous meetings. You can move forward on that. You can move forward on, you can move forward on that draft decision if, if you choose to accept it. If you want to bring legality into it, then we're gonna have to consult with town council on which way we have to move.
No, that's not what I'm saying. What was brought before you was. What was brought before you was at 9:30 in the morning, and that's the decision that, what was brought before you was at 9:30 in the morning, that I filed with the town clerk at 9:30, that it was deemed complete after, for the 14-day rule. So I'm here that if you're not gonna appeal it, because the letter clearly says, and you have it in front of you, it's funny that it's in front of you, but it wasn't on the agenda, it's in front of you that says the board. It doesn't say council, it says the board. You are the board to choose to either accept what I've done in good faith all the way up in the bylaws, and that you have done for me in good faith all the way up until right now, or we're not, we're not accepting draft decision, we're not accepting a draft decision that I wasn't even privy to. How can you ask me to uphold something that I wasn't even privy to?
Then if you, if you don't accept, if you don't accept the draft decision, I mean...
It's not legal if I wasn't the, I'm the applicant and I wasn't allowed to see it.
Can I say something? I've been quiet the whole time.
Go ahead, Mike.
What do you have a problem with? Pick it up. What's the problem?
Yeah, what's the problem? You have your draft decision, I don't get it.
What's the problem?
What conditions are we trying?
What's the issue?
Well, condition number 45.
Yeah?
At the end, it says, any such alternative overfloor parking that shall be subject to the reason, to a reasonable review and approval of the board.
Right, that was brought up at the meeting.
Planning board, not town engineer. Planning board.
Right, so what's the issue with it?
Okay, so, it's not supposed to say town engineer, it's supposed to say planning board, but the most important one is number 49.
Yeah?
In number 49, it was, a written traffic management plan shall be developed by the applicant to ensure no vehicles will queue on Davis Street, subject to the review and approval of the Douglas Police Chief. A copy of the plan shall be provided to the planning board. That's what it's supposed to say. That's not what it says. It was embellished.
So what does it say?
The plan shall be stamped by a Massachusetts registered professional engineer with experience in traffic management planning and design. The plan shall show advanced warning signs, sign boards, and other suitable traffic control devices, and shall be implemented, and shall, and shall be implemented. No. It was never discussed about a Massachusetts registered professional engineer. This wasn't a traffic study, this was a traffic analysis, and it was brought down by Leonard, specifically in writing, which I read to the board the last time we were here, that it was between me and the, and the, and the police chief to come up with a traffic management. And in the meeting, exactly in the meeting, it was discussed, what that was gonna say was that if there was any problems after I opened, four weeks, three weeks after I opened, if there was any issues, the board could revisit. Revisit. That's not what this says. But you know something? The whole point is, I, you did not follow protocol.
Can we, can you educate me here? So, this, this piece that is written a little different, that it puts us back to the board, not just the police chief for review? I'm just, just asking. It still gives you, you, it's been signed, so you can move forward. Can you not move forward with this?
I can't move forward with those conditions, those weren't agreed on.
But how does that...
They were falsified. They were not agreed on.
But, but how does that hurt you if you're already open and then there's some...
No, I'm not already open, because it says I have to get that before I get my certificate of occupancy.
Yeah.
It's holding me to another traffic study that we discussed cannot happen.
Why can, why can this traffic study not happen?
Because we don't have a traffic study.
Why can a traffic study happen?
That was, that was all about having a Massachusetts...
Because we, we, we've already covered that.
You said it's, we didn't require a traffic study.
That's what we said.
Correct, correct. We stated it. We didn't use the word traffic report. We said analysis.
So why do we have a Massachusetts engineer, Massachusetts registered engineer involved?
Well, the wording is...
It's semantics.
And why is the town, town engineer still involved in something that was removed?
Whether, whether or not we like him involved or not, he's involved because he's our guy. But the thing is, can we just move, if it's the same thing, we all heard that we weren't looking for a traffic study, the chief is gonna...
We just wanted an assessment, a traffic assessment.
We tracked, we asked for traffic analysis. We went to the police chief and talked to him, and he spoke at our meeting.
And he's online right now.
About how he was, how he was going to handle the situation that was gonna be occurring down there when they opened.
No, I know what you're saying.
We still didn't get a tra, we still didn't get a traffic analysis.
So if, if it's the same as it was, and we're, everybody's saying that it didn't change, you know, substantively from that last meeting, then are we good with that?
Well, first off, it did change. Second of all, I wasn't allowed to see it.
I don't understand the difference.
But what I'm getting at is, you as a board collectively understand, that has nothing to do with me being legal, and it has to do with the fact that you had 14 days to do and you didn't do it.
No, that's not true. That's not true. That's, we disagreed. See, your, your counsel's telling you that, and our counsel's telling us no. There's no time limit.
So...
We would have met that time limit if there was a time limit.
Would you like me to get Jay on?
Well, I, I...
What's that?
I can get Jay on.
He can dial, he can dial in, it's an open meeting. He can dial in.
If you think that's...
Well, I mean, I'll ask him if he wants to.
Sure. If he wants to weigh in. We're here now, so let's resolve this.
I mean, I don't know that this is a way to handle it.
I understand, it, it, correct. Well, I, I think...
You have a recommendation on how to handle it?
Well, I think Aaron was headed down the right path. If she has issues with something, identify what the issue is, and then if the board is okay with...
Revising the decision.
Yeah. Modifying the decision.
Modifying the decision.
Let's, let's get this done. Get him on the line if you can. You wanna get Jay in? And get this nipped in.
Yeah.
But, but if there is a couple items that we talk about here, let's resolve this tonight, it's...
Agree with Jay. With Jay. I think, I'd be...
I want to resolve tonight, I just want to know if I'm wrong.
I agree, Mike.
You know, it's already been done, but I filed that paper.
Through the chair and say, just remember one thing, we all volunteer here, so we try to do our best, all right? And every now and then, there might be a little sign where we need to look at something online and all that one stuff, just hold on. I'm speaking. So you spoke, I'm gonna speak. So bear with us. We try to do our best on everything that we do here. We review things, get an email, or find some typos and things like that. It takes some time to change it when that stuff happens. So please, just bear with, we're gonna work with you. We're not working against you. But every now and then, we just gotta stop here for a minute, take a breath, let's try to get this handled and taken care of, all right?
Yep, so, he's calling in.
He's texting.
So, so I think, what Bill, you know, alluded with Aaron, I think revising the decision is what we're asking the applicant, what, what is the problem with what line item? And then we can revise the decision. And Bill says that's...
And it might be semantics, just...
The best way to go forward. And maybe rewording or striking out something that wasn't covered. I think that's fair. Let's, let's, let's look at that. So...
Yeah.
So line, what, what item is, I guess, or items?
Line 49.
49 is giving some heartburn.
Can I ask a question before we cut, before we continue? Just so I can clarify what's happening.
Through the chair.
If we fix this tonight, it will be signed tonight. I will not leave here, I will not leave here knowing that it's in his hands again and to wait for him to fix it, because it won't happen. He'll be too busy, too busy, too busy.
Wait, let's, let's work on revising.
Let's take one step.
Yeah, let's work on revising, because I think, and then you'd have the support of the board from there. Ernie?
He's responding, Bill, huh?
Yeah.
He asked for the line.
Okay.
Good.
So at least we can have a discussion on the Harper.
Just, uh...
Okay. We're waiting for him to dial in, Bill?
Mm-hmm.
All right. What's that?
I'm sorry.
No, we're good. Um, so, while we wait for the, for the next planning board meeting, I want to bring on to our agenda talking about the private ways while we're waiting for Jay to dial in. John Furno, and actually Christine Furno, our town clerk, sent me a list of all the private ways. And what I'd like to do is have a discussion at our next board meeting regarding those, and maybe adding in some signage, if we have to do a warrant article to put money towards that.
That is a private way?
Yeah. Because we deal with the heartburn of that, with app, I think it's needed. I think it's needed.
I know, I know, and what's there, a private way is labeled a private way.
Correct, correct, yeah.
I mean, I don't know if it's...
I think we'll, we'll start a discussion.
Private way signs of other people that own the private way.
No, correct. But it's the sign out front.
You can find out.
It's a sign out front, I mean...
Isn't that their property?
It's...
Yeah, it is, it's there.
It's in the street.
There might be some problems with doing it that way. You know, people interpret things differently, you know.
I understand, but...
So, so, you know, you gotta be prepared for that, too.
I know, yeah.
You're starting to call some private ways and others not private.
No, 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 I, I think, or just more of a published list, I mean...
We'll have a discussion.
Have a discussion on it.
I emailed out the town clerk's list, everybody.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think we'll have it, at the next meeting, we could discuss it a little bit, that's all.
What are we waiting on?
What's the purpose?
I, I think we deal with a lot of heartburn with people moving into town, not knowing that their road was a private way, and I think we've got, you know, those issues that come up before us. And it causes a lot of, you know, unnecessary discussion if it was proper labeling.
How can the town install a sign on private property?
It's on a public way.
On the public way.
The street sign is...
It's on the public way.
Maintained by the town.
Correct.
You know, when you see a private way sign, the natural response from most people that aren't familiar with what we're talking about here is, you know, no, no trespass.
That's pretty good.
Or transparency.
But, but, you know, the conversation I had with, the conversation I had with someone was, you know, today was, you know, a realtor's not gonna tell a person buying a home in this town, oh, that's a private way, and, I mean, and I know your point, Ernie, of like, buyer beware, but, you know, if we can help a little bit.
I mean, I'm just not sure taxpayer money should pay for putting up...
No, we'll, discussion.
Ways, and there's a whole...
I know, we need bounds.
Other things that...
We, we, I'm not looking to do it all at once, chisel away at it.
We'll discuss it, put it on the agenda, we'll discuss it.
You know, I guess the other thing we can all bring forward, also not to Bill, is probably the, a draft of the gas station for future, you know, change, since, since that was identified last night. I know. Oops.
Yeah, there's a lot that's not...
So, so we just gonna add them as we go and, as we discover them? Same thing, we didn't realize.
You know, it's problematic either way.
Yeah.
List is not broad enough, or it's, it's too short.
Yeah.
That's problematic. You know, you look at some towns, it's too specific.
Yeah.
Yeah, it goes both ways, yeah.
See intent on getting back to us here?
Yeah.
All right.
What's he doing?
He's gotta go on his computer because we can only do Google Chrome.
Yeah.
It's a problem, Aaron.
Google, agita. So... So, that private way list, I was surprised how long it was. I was like, have you seen it? You haven't seen it? I think Bill sent it out.
I sent it out.
Yeah, I was surprised how long it was. I was like, oh, and, and I mean, and I think there's like areas we won't even have to bother with, such as Walmsley Terrace, it is what it is.
Unlike a public way, when you go on a private way, you are immediately trespassing by someone's property, because we own to the center of the street, and we have a right-of-way through an easement on our, each of our deeds has an easement over the, each and every, what do you mean? My deed says I have an easement over every other block.
To get to you.
Yeah, it's, it's pass.
And each owns that way.
Yeah, correct. It's, it's, and that, and that's a right-of-way, or a private, private way.
Right, private, no, I'm on a private way.
Private way, yeah.
So, I have an easement.
But you cannot deny access.
Correct, you cannot deny access.
Maintained by the town.
Correct.
Oblowed by the town.
No! It's not maintained.
No, I know.
And that's where we get into.
That's the difference, yeah, it's not maintained.
People that are on that road have to pay to fix that.
Correct. But, but, but that's, but that's where we get into, and that's what happens, is people come to us or to the highway department and say, hey, come fix my road, and we say, wait, you're on a private way. You know, and they come to us and say, when are you gonna accept it? And we say, you know what I mean?
It's like Enzabella.
Correct, I'm just saying, so we get hit, we get hit with it. Right? And, you know, I think we had Bald Hill.
Sign up, that's it.
Yeah, yeah.
But we, but no, but we had Bald Hill.
Because we don't have it in front of us, per se.
Yeah, I don't have access to it on this computer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Tellman.
He's there.
There we go. You can hear us?
He's on.
Okay.
He's up there.
He's in the dark.
You want it?
Go on.
I think he, he just needs some...
Yeah, he's trying to... A little more light, there you go.
There he is. So, I don't know if you want to give him an update on what's going on. So, Jay, we have Attorney Wozenyak. Wozenyak.
Wozniak.
Wozniak, and the applicants for 93 Davis Street, that is a recent site plan review decision that the board had issued. I believe you reviewed it, Leonard reviewed it, the police chief reviewed it, the board reviewed it, and we finalized it. And I think they have, well, there's a couple of things, I guess I'd like you to talk about the timeline.
Can we not?
Yeah, no, no, no interrupting, no interrupting, like.
Yes. Well, there's a difference of opinion, I don't want the board to.
Correct.
Rely on.
One view, I understand.
One view.
But I also would like to ask Jay, do we have the ability to revise the decision here in this forum tonight? If we're, if we're gonna correct, I don't know, one or two items that are listed there?
Yeah, that's it, so we can resolve this, Jay, not get into lawyers, more so than we need to, that's all, we don't wanna, this is not productive for anybody.
Yeah.
We wanna, well, I think we wanna resolve these two issues.
I don't know who's talking.
Oh, Aaron Sokrat, flagboard, thank you. And Les, do you have any suggestions for me?
Yep. On the planning board, thanks, Jay.
So, can we, are we allowed to address a couple of the added conditions that the applicant has some contention with and review those? And the board together collectively tonight, either through some wording, or let's get this right so that we can resolve this and not have attorneys involved and people held up on their progress? And, you know, our intent on this board was to make this project whole through this process. So, if we, can we address the two items 45 and 49 is what we're specifically talking about?
45, 49, 50.
Okay.
Are we allowed to do that?
Was there a public hearing previously?
There was.
Was there notice to a butters or anyone?
Yes.
Yes.
This has gone all the way through.
Yep.
And then, so that hearing was closed and a decision issued.
Correct.
Will you respond?
The decision, the, the meeting was for the timeline, Jay, so you know, August 13th, we closed the public hearing. The decision was, was in draft and finally released, sent out. Bill would know the date, September timeframe, September 8th or so?
September 3rd.
September 3rd?
Mail to me on the 8th.
Okay, so, our meeting was on August 13th and then the decision was sent out and finalized on September 3rd. The decision language was never reviewed by the applicant, the final decision, you know, before it was finalized, wasn't reviewed by the applicant or their council or representatives. And so, what has happened here is that there's the feeling of a disconnect of what was discussed and what was agreed upon and then what was written. So, we would like to discuss this with the applicant here tonight, or to correct the, any, discuss those items and make any corrections to that decision.
So, there's a public hearing, written decision filed with the town clerk. The only way you could reconsider or add additional conditions would be to do new publication.
No, no.
Because there's others that are entitled to notice.
Correct. You can't revise something if it's, if it's written incorrectly or needed to be updated?
Well, a clerical error, yeah, but a substantive condition, no. I mean, you need to, everyone, all these public hearing requirements, you and not for the applicant, they're for third parties.
Mm-hmm.
So, they're the reason why you do notice of a public hearing. So.
No, no.
If that's filing, then you've got to renotice and republish.
But Jay, if I may ask, Aaron Sokrat, 45, 49, and 50 apparently were not vetted out before the public, and it was all done internally, and then the chairman.
Support you.
But, but, no, I didn't see this, this wasn't before, you said it had to be vetted out to the public. So, it wasn't vetted, I'm just trying to resolve it tonight in the same manner that it was created.
With respect.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
With respect.
Mm-hmm.
As I indicated, I reviewed all the meetings and was meticulous with my note-taking after I reviewed the meetings. I boiled that down, so as discussed, I had Leonard provide input, town council provide input, put, the police chief provide input, and the board members.
Mm-hmm.
I compiled that into the final decision. And that was all based upon content of meetings.
Yep, okay, which they asked us to do.
But I don't disagree, but he said third party, I don't understand, why can't we resolve this tonight? Because we're for third parties tonight, why can't we resolve them, I mean, everybody's listening to us.
Because you have to give notice to the public.
But it wasn't, there wasn't notice given to the five additional conditions.
Is that not?
Yeah.
There's deliberation and then there's a hearing, so if you're gonna change it, just.
All right.
You have to do that and have to notice. I, I don't make these riddles, I'm not trying to.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate your insight, Jay.
That's why we asked you to come on.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I address town council, please?
Uh.
That's fair.
Yeah, Jay, their lawyer is present here, he wants to know if he can discuss with you.
I just want to ask you a question.
He wants to ask you a question, is that, is that appropriate? Did he ask you a question?
I just wanted.
Before, before, before he asked you the question, before he asked you the question, we were served with a notice, and I, I don't know if you saw this tonight, but it says, notice is hereby given pursuant to general, to Mass General laws 48 and 15 net. The petitioner.
Ernie, he's read it, he replied.
Okay, you read it, so.
There's no legal merit to it whatsoever.
Right.
Well, I'm not gonna get into that.
And what they're, what they're doing, they're asking us to appeal and approve, and actually action for constructive approval because we didn't respond in time, so.
No, it's untrue, there's no constructive approval here, not even close.
Yeah, so, the decision was drafted, it was forwarded to them, I signed it, and it's not acceptable to them, I guess, for some reason, so.
They can appeal it.
Yeah, so that's the process, they appeal it.
Can we have the attorney speak, if it's a pleasure?
No, no, not the chairman speak, I'm, I'm speaking, I'll, I'll let him speak when, after I get my questions answered. So, if they appeal it, then it, it calls for another meeting then, right?
Well, if they, if they appeal it and people wanna change the decision, we could do a remand, I think that would be a waste of time on their part. If the board is interested in actually working with them on a modification of the decisions, it strikes me that the applicant's time and money would be better spent in, by agreeing to reopen the hearing. All it takes is 14 days' notice and you can be back at it.
Mm-hmm.
Versus an appeal which would take months.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jay. Yes, go ahead, sir.
Jay, Joe Wozniak, counsel to the petitioner and the applicant, I wasn't gonna discuss the 14 days, quite frankly, I thought that was an issue that we're gonna put on the table in hopes of trying to resolve this. The chairman seemed to wanna discuss it, you and I have already discussed it through documentation, you know my position, I know yours, that, that's not my question. My question is, Mr. Cuniff has now indicated that he didn't take verbatim what was discussed at the meetings. What he did was take a collage of his interpretations of what was discussed at meetings and then discuss them with you and the chair and create a document. My question is this, you did note that if there is a request to correct a clerical error, and in this particular case, Mr. Cuniff would have been in that quasi role as a clerical individual because he is regurgitating the minutes of the meeting from this planning board. Couldn't this planning board correct from a clerical perspective the issues with respect to the inconsistencies as this, if this board understands those to be inconsistencies on the three paragraphs that we have to do without necessitating the 14 notice period to the abutting landowners to go through all that all over again to address three what we believe to be very simple clerical mistakes or misinterpretations by Mr. Cuniff as to the intent of this board and the meetings that took place that resulted in the generation of the conditions?
So, first of all, I'm not gonna speak to your characterization of what Bill did or didn't do, I know him to be a pretty faithful steward.
I'm not, I'm not characterizing anything, all I'm saying here is.
Shh. Ignoring that for a second, again, if it's a clerical thing, a missed, missed work, that's fine, but if you're talking about a substantive decision, a substantive condition.
No.
Because the whole issue with notice and public hearings has nothing to do with your client, John, and it has nothing to do with the board. It has everything to do with people to know what's happening. And if you're gonna change something substantive on a fight position which the public has the right to know about, and which they do know about, then you have to do a public hearing. It's unfortunate, but that's just the process. If it's a substantive condition, you're gonna have to do the 14 days. Otherwise, you'd be opening yourself for collateral procedural attack from someone else, which doesn't seem to be in your best interest either. It's just, that's just the way the open meeting law has to be interpreted.
It just seems to me that the issues that we have in these three conditions are clerical in nature with respect to, I didn't characterize anything, Mr. Cuniff, but we, the three issues that we have with those three conditions appear to be clerical in nature in terms of terminology used as opposed to what was actually understood by this board that was gonna be included within that condition.
That's weird.
So.
I don't know the conditions you're talking about, so I couldn't evaluate them here. What I'm, what I'm hearing though is that they're more substantive in nature, otherwise people wouldn't be so up in office with them. But I'd be happy to review any conditions to tell you, they, based on the tenor of the conversation, it's, that they're more substantive than just administrative.
So, Jay, is it worthwhile to walk through those right now in a brief discussion? You know what I mean? Because, you know, if we're talking about, you know, a line or two that's, wasn't accurate to what the summary or the, or the feelings or the, the thoughts of the board were, maybe, you know, we can resolve if.
Resolve it, yeah.
If there's a clerical error.
Sure.
I mean, I, and I think, you know, again, I think, you know, Bill's getting a lot of input from different, you know, parties and stuff like that, as well as what, what he thought, you know, what the bill, what the board view was on things. It's a lot to put together, so, to be fair, it's putting together a puzzle, you know what I mean, in a draft decision and putting comments around it. So, is it worthwhile for us to spend the next five, 10 minutes to review those three line items and see what the delta is? And based upon your input, if you feel it's acceptable that it's just a clerical issue, we can resolve it.
That's fine, this isn't even on the agenda tonight, what we're discussing right now, so.
You know when you see it, but, I mean, I'm happy to help you with that, of course.
Can we read them off, 545?
Jay, this, this item wasn't really even, it's under discussion on the agenda tonight, it wasn't even listed. We, we finished our meeting and they were here, so I asked them what, what they were here for, so, I mean, if.
That's a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a significant problem.
Oops.
So, I'm not even sure we should do what, you know, I mean, if, we issued the, the conditions, we, we signed it, and they received it. Now, they have a subsequent problem with it. So, should they get on the meeting, on the agenda for a meeting to do this, or should we?
Yeah.
No, you're, you're right, I, I had assumed it was on the agenda.
No, it wasn't.
Right, thank you, I would be really, talk about compounding issues, I'd be really concerned if you guys went ahead and changed anything or had, I mean, we probably already expanded upon what we should be doing.
Yeah.
Under the open meeting law, given the requirement for notice, so.
So, I mean, they can, they can either accept the decision as it is and move forward with starting their business, or if we wanna have any more discussion about this, especially since they brought counsel and they're serving us with a notice of some type, I don't think we should be doing it at all, that we should continue it to another meeting? Or put it on the agenda for a meeting?
Yeah, it certainly has to be on the agenda for a meeting, at the very least.
All right.
Can we get on?
All right, so.
Can we read the minutes from the meeting, from the last meeting about the traffic, because that's the most, that's the most, you have a leading.
We can't, we can't address that.
I'm gonna go by what town council said, you have a decision, it's been mailed to you, if you, if you have a problem with it and you wanna appeal it, then you can get put on the agenda and come to our next meeting and appeal it. Otherwise, you can accept the.
The board can do whatever they want right now.
No, no, we can't do whatever we want.
You can fix them, you can fix it or whatever, you know, it's.
It's a whatever, I mean.
I mean.
You have, you have your decision, it's signed, if it's unacceptable, then back, get on our agenda, come back, we can, we can hash it out.
Mr. Chairman, one last, one last time to our council and also, I think what Les was saying. You suggested that if it was merely semantics in a particular decision on 45, 49, and 50. Hello, Jay? If, Jay, yeah, so if it's a matter of wording, that somebody worded it as a traffic study versus a traffic analysis, and they mean something, but it wasn't meant that way because we were all at this other meeting? If it's just a matter of these things, is it worth doing to avoid hundreds of thousands of dollars lost in town? Going lawyers, them not getting what they want, us not, I'm just asking the question, is it, is it, it's, it's a matter of wording?
I don't know that to be the case or not the case, it seems like they're very.
Right, I don't either.
That's all the more reason why you need an, an agenda.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Okay, it's your call, Jay, you're, you're our lawyer, so, I mean, that's what we gotta go by, I guess.
Yeah.
I completely agree with what Jay's saying.
Yep, yeah. So. So. If you wanna get put on the agenda for the next meeting and.
I sit here.
Get put on the agenda, or, or accept. Accept the decision that was given to you.
Is it, I, I, I mean, I, I think it would be more worthwhile to do another public hearing and review, review those three items.
I, I never wanted to close the public hearing. I wanted the public hearing closed, I wanted the public hearing closed, well, it got closed, and now here's where we are, so.
All right.
We'll discuss it at another meeting if they get on the agenda.
Go to a two-week, they can get on the agenda.
If they wanna come on the agenda for the next meeting, we'll try to hash it out.
You have on the agenda the 8/13 meeting and with possible votes, that's already on this agenda. That 8/13 meeting was on this issue. So, if you'll believe that to be compliant with the open meeting laws.
Meeting.
I do, but the chair seems to have his mind made up, he's following town council, which is fine. So, and it also appears that the, there's some, be some disdain against my client because she brought counsel, which is inappropriate.
No, no, there's, there's nothing.
No, you made that remark a number of times.
There's nothing like that, but once you bring counsel into it, we have to bring our counsel into it.
No, no, that's not what you said.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion to move on from this?
Yep, I agree, okay.
So moved.
Yep, all right, motion, we don't know if we need a motion or not, but we'll see you at the next meeting. All right.
Jay, thank you for your time, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Sorry to take you away from the ballgame.
All right, sir.
That's exactly.
Yeah.
Jay, thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Yeah, we're getting way out of hand.
I know, I know, no, no, once, we at least tried to.
We tried.
Be in the middle of the road.
I think that's it for the evening, or?
Um, no, Jim. We've got some people in the audience.
Um, I'm.
Oh, Jim Pines.
Yep. Yep, all right.
What's up, Jake?
You're full screen, Jake.
Yeah.
You're number one now.
All right, um, this is becoming a problem that people come in when they're not on the agenda, so, Jim's here with Andy, they, they wanna ask or discuss something.
Wanna.
I'm, 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 I'm of the mind that from now on at our meetings, if it's a big issue, we shouldn't be discussing it anymore at a meeting unless it's on the agenda. That seems to be what town coun, that people.
I don't agree, I agree.
So, from now on, from now on.
Something like that, and a lot of times people come in here, they're thinking about doing. It's way too, it's way too tough.
I mean, so he comes in, they got a plan and say, this is what, you know.
Agree, even a discussion item.
A piece of property, that's some, that's something different, but if we start getting into this stuff.
Fair enough.
We can't do that.
Okay.
All right, Jim, Andy, do you have something you wanna discuss with us?
Andy's falling asleep. I see.
You ready to have candy corn?
Yeah, there's something in the pack, but it's not on the.
Oh, okay.
It's not on the agenda.
There you go, sir.
I reckon I'm Jim Pine, owner of the Sleepy Hollow subdivision up on northeast Main Street. I'm here with Andy Leonard, the owner of Fine Sandstone, W&amp;W Contractors. That's only for, because W&amp;W has done all the site work up to this point. I'm here looking for the board's help to resolve the problem. Just a quick recap, we came to you at your July meeting. The road had been paved, the utilities, the drainage, the water, except for that water main going up to Davis Street, it was all in. So, we were looking to accomplish what we needed to, to get some lots released. And you, through your usefulness, I mean, cooperation, said, well, let's do this, it sounds like a small thing. And instead of waiting till the August 13th meeting, you, in a sense, deputized Bill to create that, the dollar figure for the, for the bond, for the roadwork that wasn't done. And if he did that, then the chairman could sign it, and we could go about getting the bond. Well, here we are eight weeks later, and we don't have it because we don't have the, the dollar value for the road. Around the 1st of August, when I, I talked to Bill and he just wasn't getting to it, and he said, why don't you have your engineer? He can do that, he knows how to compile it, use the master open standards and stuff. Have him do the work and submit it to me, and then I'll review it. Engineers are about the hottest people in the world to even get a returned phone call from, but we did. On the 14th of August, he submitted his findings to Bill. I guess there was some follow-up stuff that Bill needed. And Andy and I took turns nagging Bill, either by email or phone call, or Andy would visit him, but we still don't have it. We had a builder that we told in July that we would have lots available to him in early August, because that's what we believed would happen, and it hasn't. And we've got lots designed, we're, we're ready to go, but we need to relieve, we've lost two months, two good construction months, two months of the time when Massachusetts is crying for housing. And, you know, pretty soon that's all gonna change, so, I'm just.
Okay.
Last, last Thursday, at the end of the day, Bill sent an email to Andy saying, I don't have a number yet, and by the way, I need an ESBIL. Apparently, most towns don't require an ESBIL halfway through the job, Douglas, I guess, does, so we'll plead guilty to being innocent of that. I'm just gonna put something out that you may or may not consider, maybe you don't even have the authority to do it. Is it possible for you to release six lots that we could start with? Because it's gonna take a couple of weeks to get an ESBIL done, and it's gonna, in, in the meantime, we'll get this bond for the road done and have it to you.
Cool question, just, how many lots are in the subdivision?
I think it's 22, 23.
Okay.
But the ESBILs only for the surety reduction, the bond reduction, because you asked for, release the surety and value, you need to establish the value for the road surety. So, it's, it's only attached to the reduction?
No, what we require, and we've always required on.
It's in our condition, yeah.
For the last 20 years, is that the piping, so, so the piping is, is what we're talking.
The water line.
No, so, drainage.
Drainage.
So, now we know the pipes have been installed at correct inwards.
Yeah.
That, along with the, you know, topo on the detention forms and that sort of thing.
Okay.
And, as I indicated, Andy, Andy and I met, I gave you a timeline, but it's in the packet. Andy and I met a few days ago, and I had begun reviewing it, as I said I would, in spite of the fact that we didn't have the ESBILs. And when I say ESBILs, I'm talking about partial ESBILs for the infrastructure that needs to be correct underneath the binder coat of pavement.
Which we're.
If it's not been installed correctly, you're releasing lots with piping that has problems, and, and we don't have money for, because that typically would. problems, and, and we don't have money for, because that typically wouldn't get included in the surety. So, um, and I, I don't agree that it's not typical with towns, um, but that's besides the point. It's in the decision, it's clearly written in the decision. We've done it on every project for the last 20 years.
Yeah.
Um, you'll see through the chain of interaction that, you know, they submitted a contractor's estimate, you typically get an engineer's estimate, and the decision requires an engineer's estimate. You want to make sure it's, you know, mass DOT weighted average bid prices, for example, which is gonna be much higher than a contractor's estimate. Um, and in fact, the, the numbers that their engineer came up with were in fact higher. Um, I've begun the review, as I indicated, and I'm seeing some things that were omitted, some unit prices that I have discrepancies with, but it's a process, and, and, you know, I am proceeding with it, and I would recommend or not release any lots until we have a surety in place.
So you did, you know, through the chair, Bill, you, you went up there and did a site visit through the site, right? You videoed that to the board?
Yes.
You did take a look at the, um, the drainage there on-site, as well as the, um, uh, all where the mail stop was, and as well as where the lawn cutting retention pond was?
Yes.
All, all on the video. So, was there any concerns when you did that?
No.
When you saw, on-site, I'm just, just...
I have a level of comfort, I've worked with W.W. in the past, and they've, they've done great work, I have no issue with that.
Yep.
Look, I can't treat them differently than I treat the different...
No, no, yeah, I'm just saying, there's a difference between not seeing the site, I mean, I just want to refresh board members that you did see the site and... Well, that, that was a different...
I'm getting a little confused. So, partial ASBIL plan certified by a professional civil engineer and professional land severer shall be produced with each request for bond surety reduction. So if he doesn't do the reduction, and he, we keep all of the surety for the earth removal, let's just say, why couldn't he provide and get approved the bond for the road?
Well, I, I would argue that there is a bond reduction being requested. Right now, the surety is the no-build covenant, so the surety reduction would be, hey, I want, I installed these pipes, it's, it's, it's lesser of a value than if you do a calculation with the pipes.
Okay, so, one is not involved with another, you're saying. You're saying the surety for the earth removal is not associated with the...
No, it's, no, it's, it's...
So...
Yeah, this is a subdivision.
So when you're establishing the surety for the road, you're saying you need more things added, right? If you don't have an ASBIL plan?
Yeah, I'll have to, the piping, I mean, I'm sure they don't want to post surety for the piping, you know?
All the work that's already done?
Yeah, yeah. Um, are we holding any surety for the subdivision outside of the lot, the lots? So no other surety?
No, and I think they have like two or three frontage lots, actually, that are on public ways already.
Or fairly close to it.
You could get building permits for that.
Right.
Yeah, you know, Andy, the only thought that there was a way to resolve this, uh, easily that I had, um, would be, Bill's got, uh, the G&amp;H, and he's working on it. If a bond could be posted, some lots, six lots could be released, it's gonna take the problem, and, and to Jim's point, that, uh, we obviously misunderstood the requirement for an ASBIL prior to the bond, but, um, the fact of the matter is, it'll take G&amp;H, like any engineer, six to eight weeks to turn it around, just the way it is now. So, if, if Bill could post a bond that he feels comfortable with, in eight weeks we revisit, that hopefully would give G&amp;H, and if there's additional surety required, could we add it at that time? And even if it was just six lots, because to Bill's point when we met the other day was Jim's work, G&amp;H is working on a site design of six lots, I believe, six. The builder, um, once there's a bond, he'll start designing a couple of lots. All those will take time, you know, there won't be a house being built, but at least the builder will feel comfortable enough to move forward. Can I, the six... So you'd have a bond, and then you would revisit, and to be determined, to give G&amp;H time, we have to raise the, really, the only thing we have to do is raise the drain manhole covers, which, that'll be next week, then we just gotta get G&amp;H up there, that's the problem. I'm not, and I, to Bill, I'm not concerned that there's any problem with the underground construction, but I couldn't sit here and say that there is not a problem to your complaint, so. I think when it rains, it comes out the pipe.
Yeah, well, that's...
They're all pitching downhill.
The six that you want include the ones with frontage?
Excuse me?
So that'd be a total of nine, then, in reality?
Eight.
I mean, in reality...
Eight or nine.
It's, we're talking nine. So, but that, that's what I'm just saying, we're, in reality, we're looking at nine lots.
Go ahead, Jim.
Couple of things. Um, one is, after, oh, you wound up that last discussion, and for the record, I did request on Tuesday to be on the agenda for tonight, for whatever reason, was denied that, so I would have been here legally, not just to throw... Mike, to your point, one of the issues as part of that subdivision is the hopes of the people that we watered from.
Yeah.
And, and in looking at that, I, I need to retain ownership of that as much as I'd like to put it in the cash, because there's big trees in those lots.
I, I just want them to be clear on numbers, when, when you're talking six, I wanted to know, are we including the ones on frontage, not including, is it nine? That's all I wanted for, however you want to do it, it's fine with me, I just wanted to make sure of that.
It would be a horse pleasure.
Yeah.
I think, lastly, I guess, that in my 22 years of being in Douglas, I've been before every board in this building, this board more than any others, you know that I've never let you down, anything I committed, whether it was written down and signed or not. Bill and I have had disagreements on things with earth removals. If we couldn't resolve it in his office, we put it to you people and you resolved it. But I guess the other thing, I've never done anything that I didn't promise to do, and whether or not you have the inclination or the authority to release some of these lots, uh, do that on the fact that I'm laying my word and I have a track record in this town.
Can, can we do this? I want to throw something out there, if you don't mind. I know we need number on surety, so get that, give you, if you, come up with a digit that you're satisfied with, if we agree to, to release the lots. But on the ASBIL, if it's not done, let's say in two months from now, is there any way that we can say, okay, we gave you six, but no, we're gonna stop that, or is there any way that we can pull something to, maybe not all six, but say half of them, where you're gonna get three, instead of the six that ASBIL we don't have?
You're holding back 20...
So, so can I ask a question?
There's 23 lots.
Do you know which six lots you're thinking about?
The easy ones, I think, you know, we should go in on the right, starting at the detention basin up to where the new water main comes in from Davis Street, because it's, it becomes one piece of ground that's gotta be worth, and we gotta do some duels with Concom before we can do that anyways. But that, that would make sense, actually, the lots on the left are, if you will, already to build on, but I just thought it made sense to deal with that thing, that we still have some earthwork.
Because if they're closer to northeast Main Street, I think that's relevant.
Well, to, to, just to interject, I, I think I'd like to, maybe Jim and I would ask the builder tomorrow which ones, but it, it might be a combination of both, maybe the first two after Ritchie's house on the left or something, that are ready to build, they're at grade, and the other ones are...
So what are you saying about conservation for the ones on the right?
We still have some to finish with the Concom.
So, they're not gonna be able to build on those anyway?
Yeah, so, yeah, so we go, I think we go the first one...
Going in on the left.
On the left, going in.
Yeah.
So...
You're gonna have months to go through Concom.
The 200-foot zone was right at the erosion barrier over there.
Yep. So, so there's, there's 22 lots total, right?
So, something like that.
Correct.
See, in the general area.
Twenty-two, twenty-three?
But this is the...
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, I don't have a...
I have no problem, the biggest thing is, like, I'm with you 100% on the ASBIL, is you get going along, and all of a sudden, and I know the work's, I'm gonna say, is done right, but every now and then, I mean, everybody's a human, you know, it's, it's supposed to be here, but it's up here or vice versa, we all make a mistake in our lives, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, but satisfy the ASBIL to have something where we have it within, say, eight weeks, I hope, and if not, then we need to be able to have some kind of recourse if we don't have it.
I think, all, all we're trying to do is satisfy the builder to be at the Tomsey for surety.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Catch up with G&amp;H, uh, make it the covers raised next week, and then...
So, we, we, we meet every two weeks anyways, and I mean, I think eight weeks is a long enough time to get an ASBIL in.
I hope so.
Yeah, and I would, I would tell G&amp;H, only gave us four weeks.
Well, if, if you come, if you come quicker, then, you know, that's great, but...
I'd rather see four weeks than eight.
Yeah.
ASBIL's required, I mean, I, I...
I know, I agree.
I don't have a problem dealing with, working with Jim, because Jim is a man of his word, he's always worked with us.
But I just gotta make sure that we cover what we do too.
We can't, we can't jump around like we do. We gotta, it's in our conditions, we have to, we have to follow the rules.
Well, unless they increase the surety.
Well, that's right, nothing would happen to a surety project.
I mean, because the surety is a no-build, and you're right, there's a value to that.
He's, he's, yeah, he's off, he's offsetting the no-build with a, with a higher surety.
Right, that's what I was saying, when he's satisfied with the surety, then go from that point.
One of the issues, as you know, with a bond, is, number one, you pay for the bond for the whole year, however it's written, and it doesn't get reduced, even if we complete some of those issues, the bond is that way for the whole year. So, I don't want that to be any bigger than it has to be, because that will be the bonded amount.
Are you doing a performance bond, Jim?
Yeah, yeah, subdivision, yeah.
Part of our agreement? Nope.
On the left side, and then revisit it?
Yeah, do that.
A month.
So, yeah, that's a month fair, four weeks.
But they also have the other three.
They need to come up with the bond amount.
The other three is kind of out of it, so that'd be a total of seven, in reality.
Yeah.
Okay, with four, right now, we're due four, and once he's satisfied with a bond, then allow her release.
And the ASBIL, we need to...
Yeah, the ASBIL, so they're gonna be on for, we need to put them on for not, next meeting or meeting after.
You're gonna have the ASBIL first, or...
You have two issues here, um, you know, obviously, building permits and then occupancy permits, so, you know, I, I think really it becomes, the rubber hits the road when the occupancies get released. So, I'm not quite as concerned about the risk associated with the building permits, the risk actually lies with...
With the applicant, right. Occupancy is a whole different story.
Right, the occupancy is when, when I think the board needs to make sure we have that surety.
Yep. I agree.
And you're not gonna ask us for an occupancy without it. For those four lots that we're saying...
I, I mean, I'm, look, I agree with Tracy.
So four lots, four weeks?
Four, I mean, the other three, you don't have to go through us on anyways, so that's, in reality, that's seven.
Yeah, fair.
Meet with Bill on getting the surety all set and get the ASBIL rolling and...
And come back to the board for an update in one month.
Yep.
Whatever the next meeting, not our next meeting, the following.
Yeah, first meeting in October.
Oh, my God.
Sorry.
Maybe we get a progress as the...
You like us, just the thought.
So, what's the motion?
Do we need a motion?
Four lots released?
Yeah, you'll need a motion.
Do we, well...
The bond amount approved.
Go ahead, yeah?
What else? Anything else?
You also...
And then, uh, an ASBIL plan with it?
We already, we already have the bond amount issue and Ernie signing on behalf of the board taking care of it.
That's done, okay.
Yeah, you need a motion for that, though, right?
That's already done.
That's already done.
Oh, we already did that?
We already did that. The only motion we need is, once that's established, to release all of the lots.
Yeah, so how many?
Four. Once the bond has been established and signed off on, I, we agree to release four lots.
Yep.
Yeah.
And the ASBIL will, will review in a month.
Correct.
Or status.
Yeah.
Status on the ASBIL in one month.
Submission or whatever.
Step to the board.
Can we do two lots on each side?
Sure.
You could...
Not that, not...
Yeah, I, I prefer that, I prefer that too.
Beginning of the, not down the end.
I think, I, I think we'll just leave the number at four, and then you can determine with Bill what the best four are.
No.
You want, you want to call a lot number?
I don't want two down at the end, and, and two up near the road.
No.
We'll give them the first, yeah, the two, two on the left, two on the right?
Correct.
All right, I'd rather have it up where the...
Agree.
Public way is not down in the back.
Well, that's the idea, nobody puts them in the back. Nobody does them in the back first.
Like, not the one inch or enter on the right, that's a smaller slot, that might have to be different.
Yeah, that, I understand that.
And then there's the detention basin, so it would be the two after the detention basin, and the two across the street from.
Okay.
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 Uh, do we know what numbers those are?
Yeah, let's, yeah, do you know what numbers those are, Bill, or do we know what numbers?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I...
Location.
So it's not the, as you go in on the left, the first two lots, it's at, across from the right side?
Well, the one on the left, Tracy, is the existing house.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
Across the new street from that is the smaller lot, that I'm not quite sure how that's gonna work.
Okay.
All right, so it's...
Skip it over that one.
Okay.
The first two new lots on the left, and then, and the first two on the right after the detention basin.
Correct.
After the detention.
After the detention.
Yep, so he wants to skip over that one on the right.
Tracy's pointing to Concom.
Yeah, so that doesn't even matter, really, because you won't be building on, you won't be getting a building permit for those. That's all, if they're within jurisdiction, you have to file anyway. I'm, I'm just saying, so the board is agreeing really to two?
We're giving them the lots, but that means he can move forward to get them through Concom.
Yeah, whatever he wants.
And that's coming shortly in the sub division.
You pick them, you pick the lots, it's, the ASBIL will be done by the time you get approval.
You're going before Concom, yeah, you're going before Concom soon, yeah.
Think on something, yeah.
So we'll say as the four lots, as Jim has stated, that he'd like to build on.